All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wednesday, July 22, special meeting of the Albany Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And with that, we will start with your call.
All right. Commissioner Donaldson? Commissioner Kent?
Here, I have my.
Commissioner McLeod? Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Chair Wadi?
Here. All right. And with that, with this special session, item one on our agenda is a study session for the San Pablo Avenue specific plan. And with that, we'll turn it over to contract planner Jean Isberg.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Chair Wadi. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So we met two months ago introducing the San Pablo Avenue Specific Plan Project. And tonight, we're going to be focused on development standards specifically related to building height, density, height transitions, and parking, including both vehicle and bicycle parking. We do have another poll tonight for the attendees who are joining by Zoom tonight, and then look forward to questions and discussion with you. In terms of next steps, we're going to be coming back probably in September to talk about land use issues and to talk about height and density as it relates to locations. Although tonight, we're presenting schemes and concepts about height in general, we'd be coming back to talk about locations on the corridor where different heights may be appropriate. And then lastly, we'll be coming back to talk about plan area boundaries specifically as it relates to the UC Village area. Just to recap what we heard from the commission in May, there was general support for removing barriers to higher density development. There was a desire to require height transitions, but not necessarily in the form of a daylight plane, to explore alternate ways to regulate massing, potentially not just residential density and FAR, but looking at height alone or other development standards. There were some concerns that parking and open space requirements were too high. And then there was also a desire to include the street and streetscape planning in the planning process for the specific plan. Attached to staff report tonight is a summary from the transportation planner of the current planning efforts on San Pablo Avenue, both from the regional perspective and local efforts by the city of Albany. There was a desire to create nodes where higher densities were allowed. Again, that's something that we'll be discussing later this fall. Likewise, there were mixed reactions to changing, potentially changing ground floor commercial requirements, which are currently required along the entire corridor. And then lastly, a desire to create a sense of place through both the private realm and the public realm. We had a number of public comments. Many commenters talked about the importance of including bike planning in the both the specific plan and in future project design. There were some concerns about the height limit, potential increases to height limit, and the effects that that would have in terms of requiring amendments to the general plan. There were other commenters that supported removing barriers to developing higher density housing. Some commenters expressed a desire for affordable housing. Others expressed concerns about displacement. And then lastly, some commenters discussed the importance of street safety and of public spaces in terms of defining civic iconic spaces. So jumping right in, just to recap, we talked last time a little bit about the differing heights that we see along San Pablo corridor throughout the East Bay. And so this was the relationship we showed last time, that Albany hasn't seen a lot of development over the last several years, whereas some of the surrounding communities have seen a lot more. And we inferred that that in part is because of the development standards allowed by Albany versus some of its neighbors. We also showed this diagram that Jane prepared from Urban Field Studio, who will be speaking next, about the construction types that we're seeing in the East Bay. And so right now, whereas the city's requirements allow for about a three-story building, that's really not financially feasible. In terms of the wood construction typology that we're seeing under construction in the East Bay, really the maximum limit is about 85 feet, or seven or eight stories. After that, we start seeing steel construction that is unlikely to be financially feasible. So that height limits of somewhere between four, maybe up to eight stories is really the spot where we're seeing development in the East Bay right now. So in terms of the way that the heights lay out now, this top diagram that Jane created is showing the street section essentially from San Pablo, two blocks to the east or west. And so really, the height limit's not very different across the R1, R2, R3, and SPC zones. And so as a result, you could end up seeing kind of the same typology of one, two, or three stories across this area. What we want to explore conceptually tonight is looking at increasing the height in the SPC and possibly in the R3 zone, and seeing what that does for unit yields, for financial feasibility, what that looks and feels like, how many units you might get out of that, and how the parking affects the total buildout. But we're not looking at making any changes to the R1 and R2 districts, but I've just shown them here for comparison. So this diagram starts to get at the different types of sites and zoning that we see on the corridor. So in gray, we're looking at a buildout of the maximum zoning envelope right now. And the SPC zone where it curves down, you can see that daylight plane that's required now. But generally, you get kind of the same height limit across the R3 and the SPC zone. Looking in the more tannish boxes, this is proposals up to 60 feet or even up to 85 feet that would allow the building envelope to build out much more. And what Jane is going to walk you through are some scenarios where, you know, on the northern end of the corridor, the SPC zone extends all the way to Canes, and you get a lot more of a development footprint that can create more unit yield. These sites that only extend 100 feet, only zoned SPC, are going to be much harder to develop. They're just very shallow, and they start to get affected by the column grid and the parking layout. And when we think about ways to regulate density, right now, the city's code regulates density by residential density. That's the unit per acre standard by FAR or floor area ratio. Other ways to regulate density include population density. They all sort of get at different aspects of density in different ways, whether you're looking at the actual population that may be served, how that affects infrastructure. In particular, the dwelling unit count is very variable. So it really depends on the number of bedrooms you have in the unit. It depends on the total unit size, which isn't really reflected in the actual residential density standard. So it's hard to tell what kind of density you're getting when you're talking about 30 units an acre versus 60 units an acre. So we've really focused on height tonight because it's a much more standardized standard, and people can often have more reactions to different height limits. So I'm going to pass this on to Jane Lynn from Urban Field Studio, who's going to walk you through the various concepts.
Right. And so, good evening, everyone. My name's Jane Lynn, and I'm from Urban Fields Studio. And we did a bunch of site capacity tests, looking at what's possible inside of the zoning envelope. And so let's start. The first one, we really wanted to look at what you could do in the SPC zone right off of San Pablo. And this is in the conceptual zoning that we were just showing, Jeannie was just showing to you. And so this assumes that a base zone would be increased to 60 feet for the building height. And what that would get you is a building that is something like four to five stories. And in here, you would assume that the first level is a little bit taller, just in case there's some flexibility for commercial in the future right on San Pablo, or for lofted residential, or even for any other kind of community use. So the flexibility there just being in the height of that first floor. Then above that, there's the flats, apartments. And on top, you could even have some that have a mezzanine level, so you would be going a little bit higher. So what we're also showing is that, we just wanted to test this to make sure we had an idea of what it was like if you built out as much as you could based on several factors. So one is just the dimensional ability of what you could do in a 100 by 100-foot parcel. So 100 feet deep by 100 feet wide and 60 feet tall, how much you could build there. And then also having a little bit of a limit with how much you can park at the ground floor. So this is something we'll be looking at with several different scenarios. And here, what we're showing is if you had at the ground floor this efficient way of parking, where you have basically one bay of parking, that's perpendicular parking. This yields 24 spaces, and if you were parking at one per unit, you would get 24 units. Oh, actually, sorry, it's 16 spaces at grade. And so if you were only parking using surface, the surface spaces, you would only get 16 units. However, we know that mechanical parking is used, and so you can get a stack of parking in those spaces. So by utilizing that, you could possibly increase the amount of parking. We'll be talking a lot more about parking at the end of the, or towards the end of the presentation. So that's coming up. So what we're really seeing is that we're getting about 100 dwelling units per acre. Next, we're looking at the whole block. There are some, next please. There's some parcels at the near to the northern end of San Pablo Avenue that have the SPC zone extend all the way through the block. This is far more ideal. And so what you're getting is a 200-foot-deep lot, which is ideal because of the way that it can be parked. And so what we're showing here is again a 60-foot conceptual height limit. And what you're getting is 71 units and 100 dwelling units per acre. And this is really just to help us all kind of understand what some of these metrics might look like. And here, we also see that you could have flexible spaces along San Pablo Avenue, where you could have commercial, or community use, or residential. And then along the parallel street of Canes or Adams, that there would be residential on that side. And the treatment of this might be where there's entrances directly right onto the street, so that it has a residential feel. So here, again, we're assuming that not all the surface parking spaces are meeting the one-to-one. So then you would use 18 lifts to meet the parking ratio that is required. And then next, we wanted to look at what would happen if you went a little bit higher. So you just added one more story to get to, now this is, sorry, the last one really was looking at 50 feet. This is 60 feet. So this is just getting a sense of how much you could have at the site. Here, if you just go up one story, it's quite incredible. You're increasing this to 93 units versus 71 before, so over 20 more units. And also, the density increases to 135, and we're seeing an FAR over four. And what we require here, it's still possible to park it in this configuration with stacked parking. Next, please. And so to think about how the standards could be impacted even more, you know, there's the density bonus, which Jeannie will talk about in just a moment. And if you allowed for more than 60 feet, what that might yield. And so here, we are limited by how many spaces can be maximized for parking. And so what is shown here is some units at the top, and not across the entire project, but something that is just along San Pablo Avenue only. And you would see seven stories, however, it's important to note that from the street, you would really see five stories, and then the seven, that the six and seven story would be set back a bit. And so they would be diminished as a view from the street itself. So next, we'll really talk a little bit more about the effects of the state density bonus law, which is what was illustrated in the last scenario. Jeannie?
So the top of this table is comparing the output from the scenarios that Jane just identified. We've got our 50, 60, and 80-foot concepts and the densities that Jane mentioned. Now, what would the effects of applying to such a project using state density bonus law? Essentially, for each of those scenarios, you could get an extra story, or an extra story and a half, maybe even two stories. As Jane says, the parking gets limited by the space we have at the ground floor and how many lifts we can really put in before the parking gets pushed underground. Now, of course, it is possible to put the parking underground, but on the size sites that we have in Albany, it's really challenging because of the space requirements for ramps, and then, of course, for the cost of actually putting parking underground. So we really are limited to those 111 spaces, which include mechanical lifts, and then some surface parking for ADA spaces. So the other limitation here is really, as I mentioned, in terms of the construction typology, eight or nine stories is really the maximum that we see for wood construction. Beyond that, we're unlikely to see a building get built that's financially feasible. So even at that tallest scenario, where let's say the zoning standard was limited to 80 feet, you're unlikely to see a ninth story because of the change in the construction type. Now, in terms of affordability, you may wonder, you know, how many affordable housing units would we get out of these scenarios? So because of the city's inclusionary requirement at 15% affordable, most projects already qualify as state density bonus projects. But really, the additional units that are yielded under state density bonus law for Albany's purposes are market rate housing. So that 35% bonus that a developer may be able to take advantage of are coming in the form of additional market rate units. They're not generating more affordable units. They are, however, likely generating more very low-income units compared to low-income units. So you're getting a deeper level of affordability under this concept. The other wild card is that the state often makes changes to state density bonus law. This is what's in the pipeline right now, you know, so we don't know. This is what's moving through the legislature in the final two columns. So there are these proposals to increase the maximum density bonus from 35% to 40 or even 50%. So that could really change things a bit, except for this issue where we're running into the limitations on parking, and where we're running into the limitations on the construction type. So again, you know, seeing that maxing out at eight or nine stories. Now, all that said, one thing that the city could consider is instead designing a local density bonus program. So right now, the height is limited to 38 feet. If the city's interested in going to 60 or 70 feet, maybe instead of incentivizing, you know, developers having an incentive to use state density bonus law, they can instead have an incentive to use a local density bonus program. Now, it would have to be more attractive than state law in order for developers to use it. But it is a way that the city could leverage any increases proposed in density or height to capture some of community benefits, whether that's additional affordability or significant bike parking facilities, or publicly acceptable open spaces. The city could still allow a menu of exceptions or waivers, but could potentially have more control over those things compared to the controls that the city has under state density bonus law. Okay, I'm going to send this back to Jane to talk through a few more concepts.
Yes. And now, we're going to really look at the whole block some more and think about how this transitions to the R3 zone. So much of San Pablo Avenue is zoned SPC right on San Pablo, and then R3 on Canes or Adams. And so what we see here is if there was a split block, as in if there was a consolidation of parcels and you went all the way through, since 200 feet deep is very ideal for these larger developments, that you would still obey the height limits of 60 feet conceptually at the San Pablo edge, and then 40 feet at the Canes and Adams edge. And then you would step down in the middle at 100 feet deep. So when you do that, and you look at what the capacity is, we're seeing that there is, you know, this scenario shows 60 feet and five stories, or 40 feet and three stories at the back. And you also get 63 units, and the density is about 92 dwelling units per acre, just a little less than what it would be like for an SPC zone all the way through the site, or all the way through the block. And here, it's not a problem to park it if you use the lift system, so the mechanical lift system. And we're also showing here how it can be accessed from both streets. And so next, what we wanted to show you a little bit of is what it looks like when we just consider the R3 half-block on Canes and Adams. Because as we step down, this is the typology that we're seeing. This is a project that was proposed on Canes, and it shows some townhouses, and they were able to get nine townhouses on this site. So this is actually a typology, the way that they did this is really interesting. It's parked one per unit. So next, what we wanted to do is sort of look at how that typology would look if we allowed it to be a little bit taller. So the existing R3 zoning is 35, 38, no, it's 35 feet. And so if you increase it 10 feet to 45 feet, what you would get is the possibility for stacking the townhouses. So before, that was just one unit, but there is a typology where townhouses can be stacked on top of each other. In fact, you see it in San Francisco quite a lot. And so you would do tandem parking, and you would share an entrance. And so that is the one that's in the middle, townhouses with parking. That's an example of that. So what you're getting are 10 units on two parcels, or two standard parcels. And that's pretty good, because you're getting about 44 dwelling units per acre. Now, if you, we were experimenting to see what happens if you have no parking minimum. And so parking, of course, is a constraint. And so if you had no parking minimum, then you're not as restricted by the width of what is required for a car spot. But then you would have, you would make space for bike parking, which is a different configuration. So we're assuming that there is bike parking inside of this scenario. And so if you did that, and you could minimize the width of the townhouse to about 15 feet, which is very skinny, but is doable, you see it all over the world as far as the typology is concerned, then you could increase this just a few units and get a higher density. So that's just the townhouse configuration where you stack them. But if you were looking at a typology that is more like an apartment building, the six-plex apartments, you do see these a lot in the East Bay as well. So here, you wouldn't be entering right on the street like the other two do. You would go into a court sort of in the middle there, and you would have the parking underneath. And you could get 12 units that way, too. It just looks like a different configuration, but it's just to have a sense of what that could result in. So here, you might build one parcel at a time, and maybe two next to each other would match someday, and that would be considered something quite similar to what you see with all the townhouses on consolidated lots. So we know that high transitions are really important. And what we were looking at before is how there's not much of a transition with the current zoning. So if you did have 60-foot buildings, then 45-foot buildings, then the R2 and R1, what are the things that could be done with this increase in density? So we know that there are some concerns, of course, there's always concerns about bulk, shadows, and privacy. And so what we know is the code does not regulate shading nor require shadow studies right now, and that the height transition methods could reduce the shading impacts. But in this kind of context, there may be, the impact on the shape of the building would mean a loss of units. So, and then there are ways of making sure that you have good quality daylight, and also the privacy issues. If you stagger the windows so that they're not right in front of each other, or if you install screening, or if you make sure to have a type of opaque window of some kind in the bathrooms for more privacy, these are all design solutions that could help with those kinds of issues. So it is, without a doubt, something that is a bigger and more compact way of living. But there, this has been, this is a situation that is seen all over the East Bay. And it's a typology that has worked out for many people, and it's on San Pablo, it seems like, a good place to do it. So the other ways you can do it is really to modify what we've been showing as really a cube. So we can modify that cube so that it can step back or set back where it needs to. So above the parking, because parking is something that we need to make sure that, you know, we maximize our ground floor so that we can get the most out of it. If you step back beyond that parking podium in the back, then you could really minimize the bulk of the building. So that's one way of doing it. You could also do that to the front of the building. So, and that's on the next slide. So if we saw that there were some, if you wanted to make it look more uniform with the buildings that are zoned R2 across the street on Canes and Adams, then you might consider a small step back that is over 35 feet, which would match the R2 zone. So if you did that, that might minimize the view of that upper floor that's 10 feet taller. You know, it is important to consider how it is, how it looks all over. So what we have here is a little video showing what the model looks like. Because for us, it's really hard to grasp it, so sometimes it's nice to see how it goes. And we're going down San Pablo Avenue right now, and looking along San Pablo, and then now on Canes or Adams. And you can see sort of how those zoning, how that zoning could look with the models of prototypes that we were putting in there. And you can see they could vary, and along the back, you could see how it could all work together. So that just gives you a quick view of how the different zones work together. And I always know that it's, for me, it really helps to see the model turn around. So I hope that was useful to you as well. So there's, so as we were mentioning before, there are step-back examples all up and down the San Pablo corridor, and this one is actually on Telegraph, the example that is shown here. But you can, you know, even in Oakland, they have, and we've seen this in other codes as well, that a step back above 40 feet or so is something that could help reduce the bulk of the buildings. And if you do that, then you can really also show more expression to the buildings. So next slide, please. And then the other thing is to think about how these larger apartment buildings could transition to single-family homes. And in some cases, the townhouse in between the two is one way to step down. And so that's something that we could really see working well to make that transition and still have some good density right along San Pablo Avenue. And also, the way that it's designed at the ground floor is really important. So if you did really nice stoops, or had the right amount of space for landscaping, and if you're able to draw your eye and attention to the ground level, then the height of the buildings behind becomes less of the attention. So if you bring attention to the ground, then really, it almost doesn't matter what is happening above three stories. This is something that we see all over the world, and that there is a way to design it so that you're really feeling like this is part of a similar fabric to a lower-density area, yet you're able to still have the high density that would provide more housing. And here, I'm going to hand it back to Jeannie to talk a little bit about parking.
So our last section is about vehicle and bicycle parking. We talked last time a fair amount about vehicles because because parking, as we've indicated, has such an effect on, on build-out and unit yield. Bike parking requires a lot less space, and so we didn't really talk about it last time, since it doesn't affect the build-out of the building so much. On the lower right here, we're showing to scale the relationship between cars and bikes. Obviously, you can fit a lot more bikes into parking area. In this example, we're showing 12 bikes fitting into a two-car garage. And then at left, you can see on a sort of typical floor plan, how much less space bike parking takes than vehicle parking. So just to recap what the city's current standards are, right now, the city requires one space per 5,000 square feet of commercial floor area in commercial and mixed-use areas, and then one protected bike space per residential unit for multifamily housing. The code does not regulate long-tail bikes, such as cargo bikes, and it also doesn't regulate space dimensions for bikes, although staff usually refer to nationally published standards for space dimensions. I mentioned the long-tail bikes because we often hear that community members are requesting them during the project review and approval process. But again, the code does not provide any regulation there. In terms of vehicle parking standards, the city adopted updates to the parking standards in 2017, requiring one space per multifamily unit. The commercial space requirements really vary depending on the specific commercial use classification, vary between one per 100 square feet to one per 1,000. Additionally, in general, the first 2,000 square feet of commercial area is exempt along San Pablo Avenue. The code allows for a number of exceptions to the parking requirements, all requiring review and discretionary approval by the planning commission, with consideration for things like onsite car share, unbundling of parking, bike-share programs, or transportation demand management measures. And typically, these reductions are allowed for affordable housing, for residential mixed-use, where you might have shared parking. There's some specific discussion, excuse me, regulations about, for every ton bike parking spaces, the planning commission can waive one off-street parking. And then again, shared uses can receive up to a 25% reduction. Again, the code does allow for unbundling of parking, which is the distinction between charging rent for the unit and charging separately rent for, for a parking space, which can attract tenants who don't own cars or otherwise prices parking appropriately so that a tenant can make a decision about whether to have a car or where they park that car. The commission asked for data on parking. The city's done a number of on-street parking studies over the last seven years, and those are included in the staff report packet. Just summarizing here, they did all use different methodologies, so we find some different outcomes. But a few things were similar across the studies. One, the studies found that parking generally peaked after 5:00 PM during the week. The highest demand was typically shown around City Hall, around Marin. There was lower demand shown at the northern end of the corridor, that may be due to parking available at El Cerrito Plaza. There were mixed findings in the middle of the corridor, although near Solano, especially in the evening hours, parking was, was at higher occupancy rates. This is just one example from the Alameda County study done in 2017. So again, you're seeing that kind of hotspot around City Hall. We don't have as much information on off-street parking. This is a study done by Transform in Berkeley, looking at a variety of different housing, excuse me, existing apartments. These two I selected because they're, some of them are fairly close to transit, but not directly adjacent to transit. It's not directly comparable, but gives you an idea of some of the findings that, that, that occurred from parking occupancy counts of tenanted apartment buildings. So this first example on the top row shows that actual demand was closer to 0.7 spaces per unit. On the bottom, a, an example on University Avenue, a few blocks from the downtown BART, which shows actual demand at 0.5 spaces per unit. So if the commission was interested in looking at vehicle parking standards, you could consider transforming some of the subjective criteria. So for example, now, as I mentioned, how a waiver is required or a CUP is required from the commission in order to reduce those parking standards, that could be made into a more objective standard. So in exchange for certain transportation demand management measures, such as a monthly Clipper card or additional bike parking spaces, the code could identify a reduction in the required number of parking spaces. The commission could also consider adjusting minimum parking standards or identifying maximum parking standards. Additionally, as Jane said, all of the examples that we showed incorporated mechanical lifts. So although the code is silent on mechanical lifts right now, we would recommend that the code specifically explicitly allow mechanical lifts for multifamily. In terms of bike parking standards, one, the code could reference those national standards in terms of base dimensions to make that clear and objective. The code could also consider alternate methods to accommodate bikes. For example, property managers are often more interested in providing wall hooks to allow users, particularly with more expensive road bikes, to put their bikes inside the unit. And in that case, the unit would actually be, need to be designed to allow it, such that the, there's a wider entry where that hook and that bike could be located. And then I mentioned the long-tail bikes right now. This is not regulated in the code, and the commission could consider requiring that a portion of the bike parking requirement accommodate these longer bikes. So that concludes most of our presentation. Chair Wadi, we do have another poll that we wanted to launch for participates joining from attendees on the Zoom, and then we have some discussion questions. Just a reminder, these are the next steps, what we want to talk about next time. So again, although we're talking about heights conceptually tonight, we're looking forward to talking about specific locations where they may be appropriate next time. So I'd like to, oh, one more thing, sorry. We received some public comments since the staff report was published. One, requesting that the plan provide connections to Cordonesus Creek, Cerrito Creek, and Albany Hill, and treat the creeks as gateway entry features. Second, to provide shading impact studies for backyards on Canes and Adams. And then third, identifying the daylight plane as a setback requirement, concerns about on-street parking being at capacity, and a desire to maintain the small-town ambiance. So we would like to launch our poll for attendees participating from home, and maybe then, while that poll's running, we can take questions from the commission.
Great, thank you, Jean. Why don't we go ahead and let that poll remain open? And while members of the public are participating in that poll, we'll turn it back to commissioners in terms of questions. And in terms of how we'll just move forward with this tonight, we'll start with commissioner questions. Once everyone's done with questions, we'll open it up for public comment, and then we'll turn it back for commission discussion. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions for staff? Commissioner Jennings?
Yeah, just real quick, could you remind us what the current density standards are in the San Pablo corridor and in the R3?
So the SPC density standard is 63 units an acre. I'm going to double-check while I move on to the next question, the R3.
Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner McLeod, did you have your hand raised? I think you're still in mute, Commissioner McLeod.
Computer, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Well, just had a question, well, a few questions. What about R3? Is that part of our process to revise those zoning standards in this setting? Or is that going to be a separate, would that be a separate planning process? You know, in addition to what we're doing now at the San Pablo corridor?
Well, it's, it's really up for discussion. We, we know we want to look at the R3 in the context of anything that's proposed in the SPC zone. But that's something that we're looking for feedback on.
Yeah, and if I might add, that R3 is, it's really that first block off of San Pablo. And there may be projects that straddle both zones. It is always very likely to see the projects that might take up the entire block. So in that case, they would cross over between the SPC zone and the R3 zone. So we knew that we had to look at them together, or at least look at that context in the whole block.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I agree with that. Another question, and it's mostly about the modeling that was done. And I'm really a little bit disappointed that modeling wasn't done showing lowered parking requirements. And I'm wondering, why is that, that we haven't? Yeah, I think, looking at the number of parking spaces required, it's a legitimate policy tool. It has a big impact on affordability, and it has a big impact on the number of units that can be constructed. So I'm curious to know why that's not been part of the modeling.
Yeah, well, actually, the modeling was meant to kind of look at what can fit on the site. And of course, what can fit on the ground floor is limited. It's, so if you were only to park ground-floor spaces, you would get less than the one-per-unit requirement. So, you know, if you want to have less, then we don't do mechanical parking, and that's not a problem. In fact, it's an advantage. But, and you know, you can, you can always subtract from that. So in a way, we were setting it up, it up to be a little harder than what it, I mean, having one-to-one is what it's supposed to be. And so we're starting with that. And then, you know, to, to relax the parking and to reduce the ratio would only mean that we would take away the mechanical parking and that you could possibly, well, actually, the units that are shown are maxing out the building envelope. So there, there probably couldn't be too much more, except for the, the one that goes up to 85 feet. You might be able to add a few more units on the top of the roof there. But that would depend on how, how much lower you wanted to lower the parking ratio. So there's flexibility in the way you look at the, the tests. So there, what you want to do with it, you can just assume there's less mechanical parking.
And I'd also like to add one other thing. We've included parking as part of the discussion tonight. So if there is consensus among the commission, I think that will, you know, change some of this if that's the direction that, that we're given.
All right, thank you.
Do any other commissioners have any questions for staff? The comment?
All right, now.
If I can answer, Commissioner Jennings, the, the density is 63 units an acre in R3 and in the SPC zone.
Okay, great. So you know there are questions then from commissioners. Why don't we go ahead and open it up for public comment? So Anne, do we have any folks on the line for public comment?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we have. If anyone wished, wished to speak for public comment, please use the raise your hand feature. If you have a phone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and I will see it, and we'll call you in order. First up is Harry Chomsky. You can now speak and have three minutes.
Hi, that was a great presentation, and it's very interesting to see that you're looking at really higher densities and really trying to take a bite out of the housing crisis. And it's become clear that finding a place for all the cars is really the hard part. The designs you're showing are really pretty forward-looking in terms of accommodating a lot of people, and the challenge is to accommodate all those cars. So in that light, I'm really glad that you, the presentation, mentioned a lot of viable solutions, like reducing the parking minimum, or even eliminating the parking minimum, unbundling so that people pay for the amount of off-street parking they need, shared parking, and alternatives like car sharing and micro-mobility and demand management. Those are all really good things to consider. I would encourage the commission to focus on thinking about how many people want to live here and not how many cars want to live here, and let the market do the job of deciding how much people need cars. So that means reducing the minimums and letting the developers decide what they need to do in terms of creating a, you know, a saleable unit. How much parking do they feel they need to provide? And unbundling, encouraging unbundling so that the people are paying for the parking they use. Think of the on-street parking as a public resource that's valuable and not to be given away by lottery on each day as it is now. But if it be, I mean, there are times when it's in such light demand that giving it away is fine. But if it becomes too tight, instead of saying, oh, we just don't have enough parking, let's think about managing it as effectively as we can. And finally, on behalf of Albany Strollers and Rollers, I wanted to make another plug for careful attention to the bike parking standards. I was glad to see a lot of bike parking shown on some of the designs. In general, it wasn't shown in as much detail as the car parking. So I do want to make sure as these planning processes go forward that, that bike parking standards are made explicit and are prioritized in the way that car parking is, which means they should be shown early in the plans, shown in detail, protected from theft and weather, and ensure that access to people's bikes is not blocked by other parked cars the way it has been in some designs we've seen in the past. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker up is Aaron Tiedemann. You may speak, and you have three minutes.
Hi there, thanks for having this meeting. I was really encouraged by the staff report, because I think it was really great that it discussed some things that really need to happen on the corridor, especially around having a local density bonus. I think that's something that we should really consider doing in Albany and put some serious thought and effort into, especially as, I've spoken to this committee before about the risk of things like SB 50 coming down and doing a lot of this work for us in a one-size-fits-all way. The way that we avoid that sort of thing is by doing it ourselves and providing the flexibility that developers need in order to establish housing that's cost-effective and in places where it should be, which is San Pablo. On the parking discussion, I think we should, I agree with the last speaker. I think we should take away the one parking space requirement completely. There was an article recently that, in the New York Times, that was very interesting, that discussed really effectively how we have given away so much land to cars as opposed to humans. And by discussing it in this way, in California especially, we are giving away housing that needs to go to people, to cars. So I think we need to take down the parking requirement to the lowest we can possibly do, perhaps have no parking requirement if possible, and just make the height limits as tall as we possibly can. And Pablo corridor is a, you know, transit-oriented development area. It's a great place for mixed use. All our developments there should be mixed use. And I think we should give less concern to keeping things consistent with the style of the neighborhood around it or consistent with the height of the neighborhood around it, as those conversations mean that we're only ever going to keep building single-family housing essentially, which is not what we need to do to get through this housing crisis and not what Albany needs to do to meet its housing needs and the needs of people who want to live here. And so we can't be limited by having parking requirements, having discussions about trying to keep things in the small-town feel when that's just not enough of a justification to deny housing that is desperately needed. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mike. Next speaker, Micah Mia Sato. Sorry for that. You have three minutes to speak now.
Good evening. This is Mia Mia Sato with AC Transit, and thank you for a great presentation tonight. AC Transit staff truly supports transit oriented development, as such that presented tonight at this meeting. And we support transit oriented development through high quality transit and transit demand management. And I just wanted to point out, one of the presentation shared the potential ways to reduce that trouble demand management. And AC Transit has an EZ Pass program by having all residents, for example, to share costs. Per unit, per person cost is a lot lower than regular monthly pass. And we also like to encourage the city to provide transit priority along San Pablo corridor. And San Pablo Avenue corridor has historically has very strong bus ridership. And we continue to provide the high quality service and high frequency service. And we look forward to working with the City of Albany supporting a transit oriented development. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ben Fong. You have three minutes starting now.
Hi, yeah, this is Ben Fong. I'm an Albany resident, and I'm also a former Berkeley Planning Commissioner, four years in the Berkeley Planning Commission. And yeah, I just wanted to speak in favor of a lot of the proposals that you guys put forth today. I was really impressed with the graphics. First of all, that was really great. And second of all, I really think it's great that we're considering all these options together. Like you're doing everything from density to TDM to a lot of the different kind of requirements. I think that's a really, really smart. I wanted to say, you know, and just in terms of parking, you know, I think a lot of people are worried about parking. But what we saw in Berkeley was that, you know, car ownership rates are falling. We only saw fifty four percent occupancy rate in October of twenty nineteen. We also found that parking space was also much lower, kind of compared to other other regions. So I really think that moving parking requirements is a good idea, and especially on San Pablo. I mean, I think in Berkeley, we considered even within a half mile of the transit corridor. This is just on San Pablo. I think that's a no brainer. I think I'm really one to say also, I'm in support of kind of increasing bike parking, other TDM measures to promote transit use, unbundling the parking, and other ways that we can kind of reduce the restrictions around the around San Pablo. So just wanted to say that in favor in favor of all the proposals that are on the table that are kind of helping to promote more housing and help alternative transportation. I think that's the best idea to help us meet our environmental and equity goals. Thanks.
Thanks. Just as a reminder, if you're joining us by phone call, star nine to raise your hand if you would want to speak. The next speaker is Preston Jordan. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you very much. Yes, that was a quite interesting presentation. Thank you, staff and consultants to the city. I'd like to question the answer to if the parking requirements reduced to half the space per unit, then although what would happen would be that the lifts would be lost. You can still have lifts and reduce the footprint of parking area that's required by half. That would be another option there, and then you would get more units out of it. So I didn't I didn't find that a particularly satisfactory answer. I want to agree with the last speaker that building parking that isn't utilized, that's demonstrated particularly back forth in U, is pretty insane. So I hope that the commission will look at reducing the parking requirements or getting rid of them along this corridor. As far as the bicycle parking requirements currently, there's historic recent recent precedent that those are not working, that they need considerably more nuance. The townhomes on Cane's at Portland being a prime example. So because they're townhomes, only one bike parking space is required in each, even though they have three bedrooms. So that's highly problematic right there. And then beyond that, it's not clear if, well, it appears that the city standard doesn't include the access requirements to that parking space. So those project plans were put forward before bike parking was included. And then they were sort of just grafted onto the plans afterwards by saying, okay, well, this part of the garage is a parking space. But it's not possible to access that bike parking space without removing the car parked in the garage, which obviously is crazy and defeats the purpose. So we really need different standards for common bike parking areas, such as a bike room, where you may have some units where the owners have no bikes and others have more. And in that case, you know, maybe one or two bikes per unit could work. But in a townhome topology, it really does not work at all. So we really need an upgrade to that. I hope that the commission will take that up. I guess since I'm a transportation commissioner, I'm speaking obviously in my own capacity, not for the commission. But that would be something that we could partner on looking at. And finally, I'll just read from a recent Economist. This is an article, Race in America. Zoning rules which keep the cost of housing high by restricting supply and make it very hard for poor black families to move to better neighborhoods. As income inequality has risen, well to do families have bid up the price of homes near good schools for their concentrating poverty. That's clearly a situation for Albany, being an entire enclave. Thank you very much.
Okay, next speaker, Vani Davidson. You have three minutes.
Hey, guys. So I'm a resident of Albany with two young children. I was a teacher in Albany Unified this last year, and I own a business along San Pablo Avenue. So I really love this presentation. I think it's fantastically done, really well presented. Everything looks so good. I especially love being someone who walks San Pablo Avenue frequently. The idea that we bring the greening down to the ground level when we soften the building facades, that is going to add such an element to San Pablo Avenue that we really could use, and it could be carried along throughout. Right now, we're missing that. There's not a lot of space where pedestrians can interface with something with the building. It's just these solid building fronts, and that's not as welcoming and warm. So in the idea of keeping a small town feel, even with big buildings, doing that is, to me, the ideal way. I also wanted to support the this bike parking and just the idea that parking of cars doesn't need to be the biggest priority. We, as a business, see an increase in people if they are walking, cycling, or riding public transportation, returning to our business or stopping at our business. So we're not seeing that from the cars driving by on San Pablo Avenue. We're really seeing that from the people who are living in the neighborhood and walking. So for us as a business in Albany, seeing more density in our city right around where our business is is ideal. And we would really be in support of that. We recently gave up a parking space for safety of a crosswalk in preference of having a bike corral. So we would be very much in support of that. And we haven't seen big issues around parking on San Pablo Avenue yet. So I think this is a great idea. Thank you all.
Next speaker, Ed Fields. You have three minutes.
Hi, a couple of comments. First of all, as you've pointed out, the density bonus tends to get mostly more market rate housing. So if, and thirty five to potentially in the future fifty percent more. So if we allow forty five feet as a height limit, we're likely to get sixty. And if we allow more than that, we'll get even more than sixty. So I think we need to take that into consideration. As for parking, a recent application to this commission showed that between the density bonus and the commission's preference, zero parking is really the minimum parking for multifamily housing in Albany. I think we've already seen that. And one of the, perhaps only two places in Albany that had parking lifts installed, recently asked to remove them. So I think those are some things we should look at for parking. The code does not require concern about shading when someone submits an application. But I would submit to you that we need to look at shading when we're talking about changing the code. I think that's different in shadowing studies. Also, Cane's and Adams are only thirty feet wide. There was a slide that showed them as fifty feet wide. I don't know if that included the planter strip. But you need to take that into account when you're looking at shading. We had a speaker who suggested that, you know, without major changes, we would only get single family housing. Clearly, that's not correct. We've already gotten three and four story housing on San Pablo Avenue in new projects. As far as the townhomes on Cane's Avenue, those single garages look like family rooms to me. The city council almost suggested as much when it talked about how the downstairs unit could be a second unit. So I think there'll be plenty of parking in those family rooms. And I think those are those are pretty much my comments. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Amy Smolins. You have three minutes.
Okay, hi. I live on the nine hundred block of Kane, so this is my neighborhood. Given that San Pablo, San Pablo is on a major, on a major transit line and near other AC transit lines and is less than a mile and a half from two BART stations. This is clearly a transit zone, and residents really don't need to own a car to live comfortably and do what they need to do, go to work, go shopping, everything else. Instead of having so many car parking spaces, as people have suggested, in a multi use residential development include car share spaces, Clipper Card, unbundled parking, bike parking. All that's crucial to stopping incentivizing owning a car just because you can own a car because the space is there. Point five or point seven spaces per unit in Berkeley, as Gene mentioned, would certainly be more appropriate. Also, Cane's and Adams are future bike boulevards which connect to regional bike bike routes and bike boulevards north south. So living on the San Pablo corridor also lends itself to to people, including families, kids using bikes for transportation to work, to school, to transit everywhere. So just to wrap up, as a neighbor, someone who walks and rides bicycles and takes transit, takes buses and BART, the townhomes on Cane's and higher unit on San Pablo with minimized motor vehicle parking, more bicycle parking, access to transit, and incentives to utilizing transit. And car and bike share would be a great addition to our neighborhood. So thanks for the presentation, and I look forward to this. Thanks.
I see no more hands raised. If there's anyone else who would like to speak on the phone, press star nine. Otherwise, press the raise your hand feature on the webinar.
Okay, seeing I'm seeing no other public comment, then public comment will be closed. And we'll go ahead and turn it back to commissioners for comments and deliberations. Does any commissioner want to start things off with their thoughts? Sure, Commissioner McLeod. I think you're still on mute.
Sound better? Yeah. Yeah, thank you, staff and the consultants for a great presentation. I think it's really getting more comprehensive, and I think we're going to start getting into, you know, actually having to be much more specific, which is what we're trying to do. You know, I just wanted to take a little bit of a moment and and just look at this from a larger perspective. You know, it's really important that we get this right because what we're doing right now, it's going to impact San Pablo for fifty to a hundred years. Whatever we get built out of this process, imagining our specific plan will be enforced for at least ten years before it's modified. Whatever gets built now really will have a reasonable life as a building for, you know, at least fifty to a hundred years. So I think it's important to consider all ramifications of how this works with our climate action plan and our transportation plan. And the kind of street we would like to see on San Pablo in ten, fifteen, twenty years, it's not going to look like today. It should not look like today. I think there will be more space for pedestrians and more space for bikes. It is a transit oriented corridor, and I think we want to design our housing with the idea that there's going to be a transportation mode shift coming. So in that sense, I think reducing the car parking requirements is essential, increasing the bike rooms, making more space for affordable units. I think that's kind of the big picture here, getting to our climate action goals or reducing vehicle miles traveled. You know, I think that's kind of the big picture that we're looking at. So, you know, to get there, and and the other part of this is that our state mandate is to increase our housing supply, increase the units, and make them more affordable. So I'm really in favor of increasing the height limits to at least six stories along the whole corridor, maybe eight. Everywhere I go along San Pablo, I'm seeing new buildings go up eight, six, eight stories doesn't feel too tall to me. I see the same thing on University Avenue, about the same width, eight stories. It doesn't feel too tall. I think the transitions are important to think about to the R three zone. I don't think R three is part of our current planning process for the specific plan. But I would be in favor of raising the height limits there to help adjust that transition in the future. You know, a lot of what is happening with housing is that parking is being eliminated or parking requirements are being eliminated all over. Just in my brief research, you know, I saw that San Jose, Oakland, San Francisco, San Diego have eliminated minimum parking requirements. It looks like Santa Rosa is doing the same thing. So here we are in a transit rich corridor. I would really propose that we do the same and then use that space for more units. Each unit, I mean, each parking space, let's say it's fifty thousand dollars is an average. And I was looking at one example earlier, a hundred and eleven parking spaces. That's five million dollars worth of parking. But I would much rather see that money either not being spent and being included in rent. But I'd rather see more units go in lieu of that kind of space. I mean, parking is expensive in terms of its its space, and it's just expensive in terms of how much rent increase it causes for each owner or each renter. So those are my main thoughts. I would really be in favor of not really using any FAR ratios for this quarter. I'd rather just see a, you know, a forum based envelope. And I would rather not see any maximum units prescribed. I think we could let the developers figure out how to put the units within a certain envelope. And I, you know, I do like the idea of the setbacks up higher, or at least, you know, provide the terrace level can provide open space for units. I do like the idea of respecting the street edge, though. I think that's important at the ground level. Not sure how to do that with green space. It's a bit of a trade off. But generally speaking, these kind of corridors are much better when the street edge is respected. And then other issues, I asked about the option of live work units. I'd like to see some discussion of that or some idea of that going on, how that could work. We talked about transit or nodes, retail nodes or commercial nodes around maybe San Pablo, around Solano and maybe some other areas, but maybe somewhere in between the live work units on the ground level could be kind of the transition there. I don't really like the blank residential. I mean, residential only, it kind of breaks up the whole retail space, and it creates dead zones, kind of dead zones on a block. So I'd like to avoid that also. The other thing is just, you know, I think it's better to allow a little more generous of an envelope and height limits, et cetera, with the idea that we're not forcing developers to use the state density bonus law to get what they want. You know, if you limit it to four stories, we're almost guaranteed to get state density bonus law projects every project. we're almost guaranteed to get state density bonus law projects every project. So I think we should be a little more generous. You know, at least six stories everywhere. I was talking to the city manager in El Cerrito and she said they have very, they have no projects over six stories on their corridor. So I think if we're generous enough to begin with, then we might avoid some of the, you know, unintended consequences of the state density bonus law, where we actually do give up more control of the project. So those are my thoughts. I'm happy to listen to everyone else's concerns. Thank you.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Okay. Okay, let's see. I probably have some comments. Let me, there's a lot of good things said here tonight and I want to talk about some issues. Maybe I'll start with what Ian just left off. Because I differ with him on this point. I think that the right strategy we should have on this would be to not go too high, not go too close to form-based housing. I think that we should, I think we should go to a 50-foot height limit and let the density bonus process work to get us bigger buildings. And we saw in the presentation how that works. And I think that's, I think that's the way to go. I'm not, I'm really not in favor of the form-based zoning in part because from the report you made at the last hearing, you said, I was said that El Cerrito is not getting any affordable units out of their form-based zoning approach. The density bonus only takes, only takes place if the developer comes up with form-based zoning, which comes up with, uses the density bonus process. We need the affordable units. They're very difficult to build. And I think that by sticking with the lower building envelopes, the lower zoning restrictions, we will get developers interested in coming to us. They will use density bonus regulations that the state allows, which apparently may be liberalized. So I urge caution here. I urge not to grade an increase in our height limit and in this whole zoning envelope because I think we're going to get lots of development on San Pablo Avenue with simply, if we just raise the height limit to 50 feet, I think we'd get a number of good projects. And that's, and that's what I'm looking for. So other issues, I think Ian raised a good question earlier and that had to do with, are we including, are we looking at R3 zoning here or not? I think that's really important. I think we probably should look at R3 zoning as it applies along the Canes and Adams corridor where we have it. I think we should probably say that if we, that this specific plan should have rules that apply in the R3 districts along Canes and Adams. And I don't think, and we should not, I'm not, we're not even looking at changing the R3 zoning for other parcels around the city. So we need to, we need to be careful about that. I think that, that the R3 should be included in this, in this, in this specific plan. And then the specific plan would govern how that R3 area develops along Canes and along Adams in the San Pablo corridor. So I think that's, I just want to clarify that and I think it's a very good point that Ian raised. And I would like to do that. The whole issue in your presentation and as we've been moving forward here, the one thing that is kind of left out and that is, the fact of the matter is our existing land use patterns on Canes and Adams include a large number of single-family homes. I was on the commission when we did, redid the zoning ordinance so many years ago, 2004. And that was impressed upon me in spades. The R3 district in Albany is not, is only partly R3. And it's a mistake to look at the building envelopes of what's possible in R3 when we're doing all of our diagrams and when we're thinking about this process. We need to consider the fact, the fact is that there are some really nice single-family homes, our one-type development along, along, on Canes and on Adams. And those are the people that do have the backyards that might be shaded. Shaded, they're the one, they're the people who are going to be concerned about sun shadow diagrams. That's one of the reasons why we had the daylight plane approach when we did the zoning ordinance in 2004. It was intended to step down the density. I'm in, I'm in favor of stepping down the density. I like the drawings that you've done so far and perhaps I could favor getting rid of the daylight plane requirements. But, but we, I really would like to see a map of where the single-family homes are because those, that, we're talking about a transition. We're talking about a number of years of development. And, and, and the presentation you've made is just, is just very theoretical about what the zoning envelope could look like. But we need to deal with the real world issues that are going to come up when we start getting applications, hopefully, for new development along San Pablo. So that's one thing anyway that's missing in this presentation and I'm a little bit bothered by it. So, and that kind of leads me into traffic and parking, into parking in particular. I, I think we made a big step very recently, just a few months ago, you might remember, when we reduced our parking requirements that had actually been passed by a vote of the people. We had to go and get a ballot measure to allow us as a zoning commission and as a city council to change the parking requirements. We dropped them from two down to one. I favor staying there. I think that the density bonus process allows developers with specific projects to come in and ask for concessions with parking. And a commission, this commission, a future commissions can deal with that on a case-by-case basis. That's another reason why I favor modest, modest changes in our current zoning regulations here, knowing that, so we incentivize developers to use the density bonus process. So it, it's, maybe it's conceivable that we might have a project on San Pablo coming in with zero parking requirement. I don't know. I think we need to look at that on a case-by-case basis. And we haven't, there's no talk of street parking, but street parking is going to come up all the time. It kind, it comes up, I think it'll be coming up tonight and other, you know, and other projects that we're looking at. And the data on the street parking shows that parking is pretty good. It's relatively available on San Pablo Avenue. But my recollection is that the Complete Streets program is going to take away a lot of that parking, a number of parking spaces on San Pablo Avenue. I haven't seen that drawing. I don't know where those spaces would be. But if the Complete Streets plan is ever implemented, I think it was even, I saw somewhere in the staff report that we might lose over 100 spaces along San Pablo in Albany. That's a big deal. That's public parking that we provide. And if we are going to have reduced off-street parking requirements, people are going to be parking on the street. Just about every speaker we've had tonight has talked about how wonderful it is to be getting rid of parking and how expensive parking is and how much land parking uses everything that's, everything that's bad with parking. And, and it's probably true that some of those speakers maybe may not even own, may not drive cars and own cars and may not have a need to park. But the majority of people, the vast majority of people in Albany do drive. We do have cars. We can't always park them off the street. And probably 90% of our trips, our travel trips for shopping, work, and everything else are taken in cars. Cars are not going to go away. And if we're going to do a good plan, we, we just can't assume that, that the world is going to change overnight and that everyone is going to become transit users and are going to be getting rid of their cars because it's just not going to happen that way. There will be a demand for parking spaces in new development, even in, even, even in, in, in higher-rise buildings and even with apartments. I'm convinced of that. So I'm very cautious about this, about how we do this here. I, I like the idea of new standards for us to review parking, parking requirements that might come to us through the design review process. I think that was talked about, that set standards for parking reductions. I think that's a great idea and I'd like to, like to be able to do some work on that. We've heard a lot about bicycles. We've heard a lot about cars. We haven't heard anything about motorcycles. And motorcycles provide an alternative way of getting around in urban areas. I know, I know my own family has experience with that. And I don't know how many trips are made by motorcycles, motor scooters, motorcycles. But I think it's worth considering and, you know, I don't, I think it should be on the checklist somehow for new development. Is there, are there motorcycle spaces accommodated and how many? I don't know what the right and right ratio would be, but where might they be? And I think it's a very viable way of moving around and doing your, doing your, a good, a good means of mobility in a denser urban area. So mechanical lifts, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with mechanical lifts. We do have them and I did notice that it didn't, the one on Portland and Canes didn't get used and we allowed them to remove it, which argues, argues in favor of having a parking standard of one. That part, that project was built with a parking standard of two. And many of the spaces, all the spaces, so anyway, they removed it down to a ratio of one, which they can live with at that development by removing the parking list, by moving the parking list. There still may be a way, a place for mechanical lifts. Let's see, what else do we have? I think that's about it at this moment. My notes here. Oh, I like Ian's idea for looking at live-work spaces. I think that might be a place on the ground floor. I continue to be worried about the storefront and pedestrian walkways along San Pablo Avenue. I worry about having pure residential along the street front because you get big gaps in the sidewalks without any retail activity or, or any, any, any interesting events there to bring people. You kind of get a, 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 a commercial desert when you have a residential right down to the street level. Live-work might be a way to modify that and to add a little bit more life to the street. And I think it's something that we could certainly consider and I'd like to see it, like to see it on the ground level and it might require higher ceilings in some of the buildings, something like that. But I think it would be a good, a good thing. I think those are my comments at the moment. So moving forward, then it'll be interesting to see what you bring up the next meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Jennings.
Thanks. And thanks to the consultants and staff again for a great presentation. Everything's being presented very clearly and thoughtfully. And also I was, I was glad to see in the staff report that the scope of the project is being expanded, hopefully to include, you know, more integration with the infrastructure needs and streetscape, et cetera, which I think is going to just make this more functional, excuse me, for the long term. So really glad to see the direction this is heading. And in general, you know, I, I don't know what the magic right numbers are, but in general, I'll say, you know, I am supportive of more height, something that's meaningfully higher than we have right now. I'm supportive of reducing the minimum parking standards, vehicle parking standards because I do think that, I think it's an outloaded way of restricting planning and I don't think that 10, 20 years from now we're going to see even the same levels of individual car ownership that we see today. And I don't think it makes sense to build in requirements that are going to be in place for decades to come that, that don't reflect the current reality. And also, you know, the, the parking issue relates to the density issue. The more density we bring to the area, the more we're able to hopefully sustain businesses along the corridor, the more services that people are able to access by walking and biking and the more attractive and vibrant the area becomes and the less they need to get in their car. So I, you know, I live two blocks off of San Pablo and most weeks I don't get in the car. I, you know, I am not a diehard biking fanatic or anything like that, but I just don't need to because I can walk to the grocery store. I can walk to get coffee or pick up things at the convenience store. When my kids went to school before the world shut down, you know, I was able to walk my kids to school every day, walk to the bus to go to work. And, you know, and I think just having, having a more vibrant area that encourages people to do more of their trips locally and by foot and by bike is, is good on its own terms and it helps reduce the need or the desirability of having cars. So I think we do need to have some focus on better and, and, you know, not just more bike parking, but perhaps better and more functional bike parking. I was interested to hear Preston's comments about the, you know, perhaps there are some ways that are long-term bike standards can be improved. I wasn't aware of some of those issues and would like to learn more about it. You know, with respect to the, the density itself, you know, I am generally inclined to, to want to focus more on the form rather than the number of units per acre because I don't think it's the most meaningful way of, you know, thinking about how we, we want the built environment to work. Doug, I wasn't, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm not following the comments and maybe we can, you know, have a longer discussion about it later about form-based standards disincentivizing affordable housing. So, you know, I would like to learn more about that and I also would like to just understand a little better how it relates to the density bonus law. If you don't have a maximum density standard per se, what does that mean with respect to the, the state's density bonus law and granting, you know, incentives or concessions in relation to that? So those are some topics that I think it would just be good to delve into more in the future. I'm also intrigued by the idea of a local density bonus ordinance that we could use to tailor more specifically to incentivize the kinds of things that we really want to see and to kind of target which standards we're, you know, we're more flexible on, we're more interested in, you know, adhering to more strictly. I, again, I don't know exactly what that looks like and I'm not sure if there are examples that we can, can look to other precedents from around the Bay Area or beyond. But would be interested in, in hearing more about that and again, using it as a tool to encourage production of more affordable housing while incentivizing the kinds of developments we want to see rather than, you know... Um but rather than, you know, I do think under the the state density bonus laws, it is very open-ended. Um and we can't change the the state law in terms of, you know, what developers are able to avail themselves of um for for waivers and whatnot, but if we are able to incentivize um certain kinds of of development that we want to see, I think that that is a a potentially good tool. Um let's see, I and I guess last thing on parking, I'll just say that, you know, it's it's a, it's going to be a perennial topic of conversation, like it's not going away. And I I don't support going to zero parking necessarily. Um but I do think that uh if we're going to have a location in Albany that we can try out reducing the parking standards, the minimum parking standards further. I think this is it. Um San Pablo is a well-supported corridor for transit and and again, just accessibility to other businesses. And I I think longer term, you know, to the extent that we want to ensure that there is a an ongoing supply of vehicle parking, I, you know, I would encourage the city to think about planning for it on more of a district basis or, you know, more of an area-wide basis rather than um imposing uh prescriptive requirements parcel by parcel where it just, it doesn't always make sense because of, you know, other site constraints that that, you know, you all have have highlighted. Um it doesn't always make sense to have the same amount of parking on, you know, parcel A as it does on parcel B. And I think there could be some efficiencies to um planning for it more more broadly and um in a more coordinated way. I realize that suggestion is beyond the the scope of the current specific plan. Um but I think it's something to keep in mind. To the extent that we reduce individual building parking standards, it doesn't close off the possibility that, you know, if if more parking is needed, uh you know, that that it might not be able to be provided um somewhere else or in a more, you know, communal is the wrong word, but a, you know, a shared location. Um so I think that's it for now. I I'm pleased to see the direction this is headed. Um and, you know, again, I I don't know what the exact right height is at this point or the the right, you know, density to, that we're going to have those limits. But um I'm I'm glad to see what you're looking at and laying out the different scenarios. Um and uh glad to see what comes next.
Commissioner Kent, did you have any comments?
Yeah, a few comments. Um. Actually, I'm kind of on board with the no parking idea, but I'm still, I have a little cold feedback on the whole thing too. Uh you know, looking at our laser port, twenty-five percent of the commuters in Albany use public transit and the rest use vehicles. So it's not like we're vehicle-free here. But these are existing homes, new homes, obviously people moving in there would, you know, they know what they're getting into. So I guess I'm leaning towards letting the market rule on that. If the person developing it thinks there's a market for people that don't need cars, then that works because I know that a lot of expense goes into building parking that's not always needed. But I'm I'm also very cautious about that we make it such so sweet that the developers rush and all of a sudden all of our um service industry along San Pablo gets eaten up with high-density residential. So we lose, okay, maybe we lose the entire place, but then we lose our car wash, we lose bowling, we lose our strip malls and and we lose all our services. And now we're traveling farther to get these very services. So we've lost our kind of our our all these things that are very available to us are no longer available. We have to go further to get them. So I know El Cerrito, when they did their form-based code, there was a big rush to develop there. And then the community got very panicky and they started to put the brakes on a lot of it. And I and I think a lot of things held up. And then the market changed and some of the candidates were working built. We're having trouble going through. So I don't know enough of, we're kind of baking a cake here. I don't know what it takes to make it so sweet that we lose everything. I want to make it definitely more attractive to building than it is now. That's kind of, I don't know, I have an expertise really to make that decision. And it's easy to kind of look, check off things, that sounds great, that sounds great. And next thing we know, boom, we kind of throw out the baby with the bathrobe. Those might be concerns. The the general plan states that we want to transition San Pablo into a more pedestrian-friendly corridor because currently, you know, it's officially, it's a it's a vehicle corridor. And with that, you know, we usually have wide pedestrian, outdoor seating, kind of like Solano. So, you know, outdoor seating on San Pablo doesn't really sound right, you know. Currently, when you envision that, it's kind of a major traffic corridor. It's loud, it's probably a lot of buses. So um. That's all, I, you know, I don't have the answer. I just want to throw my my thought, my concerns out on that. I want to make improvements. I want to make it more uh friendly for development. I don't want to go so far that all of a sudden everything there gets wiped away and we lose everything. Lose the large retail.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Kent. Um well, I'll just uh wrap things up here with some comments of my own on this. Thank you again to the um uh to Jean and to Jane and to staff for this. Um I I do like kind of taking these issues a little more bite-sized at a time. I think it makes it much easier to digest. But to me, sort of stepping back a little bit, like ten thousand-foot overview on this again, is that, and and going to some of the public comments. Um like to me, the the purpose of focusing on San Pablo also for a special plan is that, you know, in, we need to figure out where our density and where our fair share of density is going to go in Albany. And I think all of us love sort of the the small-town ambiance of Albany and sort of the the charm of Albany. And I think to me, the the main issue is, you know, we can't have our cake and eat it too. Um we, if we love the charm of so much of Albany, we have to find where we're going to tolerate density if we don't want it to sort of disrupt our cohesive blocks of single-family homes. And so to me, San Pablo really is the perfect place. There's not, there's not really a there there right now. Um it doesn't really have a strong sense of neighborhood character. Um there's not something that we're really going to be terribly disruptive to with the, you know, with the exception of certainly we've got businesses, as Commissioner Kent mentioned, that are um important there. But we also have, I think, a greater proportion of really underutilized sites. So um I really think that's an important thing for us to all keep in mind is that, you know, we don't really have an option of not accepting new density. Um it's going to come and I think it's about being strategic about where we place it in our community. Um so sort of for starters, I absolutely think this is the right place. And I think this is the right place to test things that we haven't maybe been as comfortable doing elsewhere uh in the other zoning districts in Albany. So with that, um sort of the heights, the first question of being, what are the appropriate heights? Um, you know, I would agree with Commissioner McCloud on this. I think, you know, to me, sixty-five feet along San Pablo seems about right as of right. I think as a result of that, you'll get a lot of projects that stick within sixty-five feet. We've seen that with El Cerrito. Um, you know, you may occasionally see an eighty-five foot one coming in through state density bonus, but I think in reality, um you'll get a lot of projects working within that mapped height. Um and I would agree that it does, I think, behoove us to not set ourselves up for, you know, a lower height, knowing everyone's going to use density bonus and getting sort of this awkward disposition of building heights. I think it's sort of good to plan what our desired height would be. And I think sixty-five feet to me feels about right. Again, I'm not sure if that's, you know, fifty at the street with a, or fifty-five at the street wall with a step back of the upper floor, but I think somewhere in that ballpark makes a lot of sense to me. Um I do definitely think whatever we land on should end with a five. I think the ground floors need to be able to accommodate a taller height. Um but from my experience, if you give a full ten feet, you're just going to be getting people trying to squeeze in an extra floor and make squat floor-to-ceiling height. So I think focusing something around um that ground floor additional height is really important. Um I'd be open to a local density bonus program, but I'm also a bit skeptical. Um San Francisco, which is where I have the most familiarity, has its own um local density bonus program and no one uses it. Um and I think the lesson, or not no one, but very proportionately, it's it's very seldomly used. Um and to me, I think the the primary issue is the the main benefit of state density bonus, I think for a lot of folks, especially in the Bay Area, is that there's certainty. Um the discretion of local jurisdictions is really pulled away to a fair degree. Um and I think that actually outweighs much of the other, you know, waivers and concessions concessions and incentives and all of that. It's that certainty of knowing I can get this project. And so I think um if we are to do something locally, we have to keep that in mind, that that certainty is really where the value at, I think, comes in. Um and I would also just be open for kind of keeping it simple, having our local rules and then knowing what the state is and and knowing that people are going to leverage that. Um in terms of the R three, um I do feel like looking at that wholesale is is biting off quite a bit more. Um I would certainly be supportive of looking at it in a strategic way at, you know, which are the which properties are most likely to be rezoned in conjunction with a San Pablo parcel being redeveloped? You know, which are our underutilized parcels that might be a corner lot or that are currently sort of a through lot that span or split those zoning districts? And maybe looking at, you know, and I don't know what that looks like, if that doesn't make sense and feels very hodgepodgey. But um, you know, I think that would be worth at least taking taking a look at that um rather than just a wholesale sort of swiping of the full block along Canes and Adams. Um and generally, as it relates to heights and upzoning in general, um I think it absolutely behooves the city. If we're going to be upzoning, we're uh giving property owners a lot of added benefit and a lot of added value on their properties. And I think the city needs to think very strongly about how the city benefits from upzoning folks' parcels. And so, you know, does that look like increasing our local inclusionary percentage? Um understanding there needs to be things like Texas studies and all of that. Um but I do think looking at what the community benefits that the city would get by giving this increased um benefit to property owners is something that um is probably a whole meeting unto itself, but um is definitely something that I think we should be focused on. Um in terms of height transitions, um, you know, I think I said this last time, I'm not a big fan of daylight plane. Um I don't think it makes a ton of sense, but I do think that it makes sense to provide a transition between the backyards of folks who are on Canes and Adams and to the parcels fronting San Pablo. I certainly would be supportive of sort of a full build-out at the ground floor podium level of parking and then just a straight setback. Uh and again, I don't know what the right setback amount is, but I think that's, it's just a much more um logical approach. I think it gives a little more certainty to folks who have backyards that, you know, the big mass of the building will be set back X feet um rather than kind of talking in planner-y's. I think it it just gives a little more certainty to to everyone. Um let me see my other notes here. Uh in terms of sort of punctuating height or height transitions, I still would be supportive of thinking about in general, instead of it just being a flat sixty-five feet all along San Pablo, looking at some nodes where we do want to sort of accentuate or punctuate um important parts of our community. Um so certainly, I think at the intersection of Solano, it would make sense to use the the building forms uh in some shape or frame to like highlight that intersection as well as, I think, sort of the the entrance of Albany at some level by the El Cerrito Plaza. I think you could accommodate increased height down there. So um, you know, some combination of sort of geography locations um in terms of accentuating height and transitions of height, but also then sort of the rear yard transition of height. I think those are two separate issues, but important things to think about when we're talking about height transitions. Um in terms of residential density, um I certainly am supportive of form-based zoning. Um, you know, I think at the end of the day, most most people walk down the street and they look at the building and the way it looks and its height and its setbacks and its form and its, you know, how the, how the building meets the street um and don't really care about how it's broken up on the inside. And I do think that the market usually does a pretty good job of figuring out whether, you know, our community needs family-size units, whether we need studios or whether we need something in between. Um and so I I certainly would be supportive of of at least trying it in San Pablo area of eliminating density limits and doing a form-based code. Um and then lastly, in terms of the sort of the big question of parking, I agree. I think this is a sort of a never-ending point of a debate, at least for our foreseeable future, about the what the right amount of parking is. I would certainly be supportive of reducing parking here. Um, you know, if there was general support for it, I would be open to removing parking requirements here. I think there's also, it's important for me to keep in mind is there's a difference between removing parking requirements and establishing a parking maximum. Um, you know, removing a parking requirement doesn't mean that all of a sudden every developer is going to come in with no parking. Um from my experience, fine, you know, real estate financiers are usually fairly conservative when it comes to parking. Um and I think they are much more risk averse to not find, you know, to financing a project without parking, especially in in more suburban communities. So I don't think pragmatically, we're going going to see a lot of projects that have zero parking uh because they likely won't get financing for it. But I think what that does is it lets each individual project come forward with the amount of parking that they think is actually realistic for the demographic that they're marketing it towards. So typically, you know, luxury projects typically need parking in order to finance them um and more sort of um your average market redevelopment, I I've seen at least needs a little bit less parking. Um, you know, I I would definitely be supportive of going down to point five uh parking if if we felt like we had to land at a number somewhere. Um but would be open to the conversation about, you know, looking at what no parking requirements when you don't also concurrently have a maximum requirement and what what that actually looks like. Um to that point, and sort of my last, my last point on parking, and I certainly, you know, to the bike parking thing, I'm very supportive of of us updating and sort of making contemporary or bike parking requirements to accommodate all sorts of sort of best practices with bike parking. Um but I also think it's really important when we're talking about San Pablo is the ingress and egress of parking on San Pablo. Um, you know, I do think a lot of people um do need parking for more of parking storage rather than daily needs. Um that's certainly how I use my car, is more of the maybe a once a week, maybe a once every two-week use of my car. Um I probably won't get rid of my car, but it's certainly not something I use on anywhere near a daily basis. So I think looking at creative ways of how we store the cars, whether we allow tandem parking, whether we allow stackers, whether we have, you know, allow for if some building actually wanted to have some sort of an attendant-type system or some other system where you don't have independent movement of cars, but you're storing a certain quantity of cars. Um leveraging that with other TDM measures to allow for sort of an offset of of parking if we do have a requirement would all be things I would support. But I do think the ingress and egress is a really important one. When we think about San Pablo Avenue being a major transit corridor, um there's nothing that slows down traffic more than somebody, you know, backing out or coming out of a driveway in the middle of of traffic um and everything slows down. And so I I do think um factoring that in in some way and whether we have some requirements that, you know, if if it's a corner parcel, we require that the parking ingress and egress comes off of the side street rather than on San Pablo to discourage that um and to really look at sort of best practices around that um would be my recommendation. But I know that's a lot, but those are my general thoughts on this and I agree. Like I don't, I don't know what the exact right number is or the right height, but I think generally speaking, um yeah, very supportive of increasing heights, increasing density and decreasing parking along San Pablo. So that's sort of the gist of it. So that wraps up my comments. Um yeah, we can move back around for folks who have second thoughts here. So Commissioner McCloud, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, um yeah, I appreciate everyone's comments. Um really interesting to hear. Um I guess to move the parking discussion along, what I would really like to see is the modeling done that shows, let's say, uh you know, similar to what you did for the larger units, not just the ones on Canes, which aren't really representative of what we're going to get on San Pablo. But if you start modeling that, let's say, I mean, like, nothing will have zero parking. There's always going to be ADA parking, there's going to be service parking, there's going to be some parking. Um but I think if we start modeling it, I think that informs the decision-making. Uh we can start seeing that actually, okay, we take it down to point five spaces per unit or we take it down lower than that, we can see what the results are in terms of the number of units we get. Um and I I'm assuming at some point you're going to do some kind of financial modeling um cost per unit, or is that something, or maybe there's some way to figure out that this X number of parking spaces costs this much, it will add this much per unit, it will result in this much more in rent per month. Um, you know, I think the added cost in rent can be significant, uh especially when we're trying to make our housing inclusionary. Uh we're trying to make it affordable for younger people to live here, for people that um, you know, have kind of average jobs, that we don't want them necessarily commuting from outside other places, we want them to be able to live here and work here. Um so making rents as affordable as possible, I think, is a big consideration. I mean, I've heard a lot of people say they don't want to add costs to housing. Well, parking adds a huge cost to housing. So if you're for affordability, I think logically you're for reducing parking requirements. So I think modeling it and having some um basis for seeing the actual numbers of units that can be increased increased uh would be really helpful. Uh I think, you know, the other question I have, and it's about getting more affordable units. Um I mean, I would like to see some. units, um, I mean, I would like to see some discussion of our, uh, inclusionary ordinance. I mean, what if we do start requiring more affordable units or more very low income units? I mean, how does that affect the mix and how would that affect, um, kind of the feasibility? I think we should always, we should be looking at that ordinance as well. Um, you know, as somebody said, the state density bonus law mostly leads to an increase in the number of, uh, market rate units. So maybe we need to mandate that we have more instead of allowing it to be a developer's decision. So some analysis of that and some analysis of how that affects the feasibility of actually building housing, I think would be important. Um, and the last thing, you know, I was thinking that it would not be a bad idea to have a subcommittee with the Transportation Commission, uh, to actually look at bike parking standards, look at, uh, different models, look at, um, you know, ways of proposing new standards. Um, and I think a kind of a corollary of that would be, um, looking at alternatives to car ownership. And I know, um, Transform has done a lot of work with that, with their Green Trip Certified Program, you know, car sharing, mobility hubs, transit passes. I think the whole idea behind reducing park parking is to provide other alternatives. And I think we should be looking at that. Um, so I, I think it would be really helpful to have a subcommittee that works with the Transportation Committee on ideas like that. Um, you know, maybe two members from each. So I'd like to propose that. Um, and I'd like to hear what everyone else thinks about that. Thank you.
Any other commissioners like to speak? We have a few more minutes before our regular session starts, so.
All right.
Here, Donaldson, okay.
There, I think you can hear me now. Um, wow, there's a lot of good comments tonight. Um, very interesting. I'm trying to think this through. Um, it's hard for me to be very theoretical about this, so I want to go back to like, ask kind of the question is like, why are we doing this? And I, I guess probably one of the reasons, the, the primary reason we're doing this is because we have San Pablo Avenue and it's hardly changed in the last 10 years. Um, very little development. Um, what's the reason for that? Um, I would submit the reason for that is because we have a 38-foot height limit. Um, uh, so now we've been engaged in this specific planning process. Um, and, um, we're, we're really getting into a very hypothetical thing and I'm having trouble grasping and, and working with this, you know, form-based zoning, what heights, what numbers, so much is on the table. Um, I just, I, I just, my pragmatic intuition is if we were to raise the height limit to 50 feet, I think we'd get a lot of development. I think we would have projects coming in. I think that Albany is a very desirable place. I think there are opportunities for new development on San Pablo Avenue that haven't been, um, that haven't been taken because of our low height limit. I think that's the driving factor here. Um, so, uh, if, if we want some development on San Pablo Avenue, I think that's all we would need to do. I, my, my idea would be a pragmatic experiment is raise the height limit and wait a year and see what we have, um, and, and work, uh, work forward in kind of an incremental way. I think it's, it's difficult, uh, for me to, um, sit here and try to draw a plan that is going to, uh, say what San Pablo Avenue is going to look like for the next 50, uh, 50 years or so. Um, it's, it's, I don't know, that's the hard part of this for me. I guess that's all I have to say right now. Anyway, I sure do appreciate a lot of the comments we've heard and some really good input, um, and, uh, and will carry, I can carry forward with that. But, um, uh, anyway, I, let's not lose, let's not lose track of the fact that, um, we, we really do want to see some development on San Pablo Avenue. And I would say not too much and not too fast. Let's not have a revolution in the, in the way the street looks and in the, and in the community. Um, that's, that's where I am. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Um, just a couple of minutes left here, but, uh, Jane, you did a quick analysis of what was being built. And, um, is that, that was based purely on what is profitable based on the cost of building and the cost of sales? That's kind of the equation or was that what's being built more about what is being allowed by the zoning?
Um, if, sorry, if you're, uh, referring to the, the site test site did today, they were purely based on the physical ability to fit the units, um, within the height, depth and width of the parcels. They were not necessarily based on any market, um, cost of things. So, uh, but we do see strong, uh, market indications that this typology of type five over one construction is something that is happening. So we use that as a basis. So I, I hope that answers it, unless you were.
No, five over one is very common. I was wondering if that's because it's zoned that way or that's just a good one, a good kind of profit range for them. I know, I know it's wood over concrete, so it's pretty economical.
Right.
All right. Um, if, are there any final questions? Otherwise, I think we have a couple of minutes that we can, um, take a quick, a quick break and then we can come back to our regular, uh, regular session starting at seven. But yeah, before so, we do that, uh, Jean?
Can we just launch the results of the poll?
Oh, yes, please. Thank you for reminding us.
Okay, I'm going to share the results. Hopefully you can see that. We had three questions. The first question was about parking and people could select multiple choices about whether San Pablo should have different vehicle parking standards than the rest of the city. Uh, many, the majority of people said yes, lower parking requirements near transit. About half of respondents said lower parking requirements in exchange for additional bike parking or in exchange for additional clipper cards. Uh, and then 18% said no, maintain at least one space per unit. We had a couple of other questions, but I'm not seeing them show up, unfortunately. So just parking for tonight.
Okay, that's great. Uh, maybe at our, our next hearing or at the end of the regular session, if those pop back up, feel free and, and share those. Um, all right. Uh, with that, why don't we, um, adjourn this meeting and we will take maybe a two-minute quick break and we'll, um, all pop back in to the 7:00 PM regular session. I think we're just waiting for Commissioner Jennings and then we'll go ahead and start up. All right. Thank you, everyone, for rejoining us for our now our regularly scheduled, uh, 7 o'clock hearing. Uh, if we could call this meeting to order. Uh, second on our agenda here, roll call.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Uh, here.
Commissioner Ken?
Here.
Commissioner McLeod? Uh, Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
And Chair Wadi?
Here.
Thank you. Item three on our agenda is ex parte communications. Do any commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose for today's hearing?
No.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item four on our agenda. Item four is the consent calendar. The consent calendar, uh, are, contain items considered to be routine and will be enacted on by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the commission. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the commission or a member of the public wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar. Um, so we have a few items on the consent calendar today. First up, we have item four dash one, the Planning and Zoning Committee, uh, Commission Meeting Minutes from June 24th. Item four dash two, Planning Application 20-026, Design Review for a Second Story Addition at 530 Talbot. Item four dash three, Planning Application 20-027, Design Review for Two-Level Addition at 941 Key Route. Uh, and item four dash four, uh, Planning Application 20-028, Conditional Use Permit and Parking Waiver for Happy Day Montessori Preschool at St. Albans. Uh, with that, do we, uh, do any member of the commission, uh, and do any commissioners wish to pull any of those items off the consent calendar?
I think we should probably pull off, um, four dash four because of the public comment.
Okay. Okay. So why don't we, we'll go ahead and pull item four dash four off the consent calendar. Um, and regarding items four dash one through four dash three, do we have a motion to approve those on consent?
Um, I'd be happy to move approval of the consent calendar, the first three items, the minutes, 530 Talbot and 941 Key Route. Happy to move because the applicant for one of these projects is my physical therapist. I think, same name anyway. So anyway, there, the two projects are being approved are nice projects. I have no problem with them at all.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I can second.
Okay, great. Uh, and so with that motion, we'll do a, uh, individualized vote here. So Commissioner McLeod. Okay, he said aye. Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
And Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Uh, and I too, uh, vote aye. So that is a unanimous vote for items four dash one through four dash, uh, three on the agenda. And for those projects, just remember, uh, we do still have a 15-day appeal period, uh, and for the second story addition, please leave a, uh, story polls through the duration of that appeal. Um, why don't we then go ahead and take item four dash four, um, and hear that now? Uh, staff, do you have a brief presentation on item four dash four?
Sure, I can do a quick, um, summary on the project. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit and parking waiver for Happy Day Montessori's Preschool at St. Albans Episcopal Church at 1501 Washington. Subject property is an 8,914 square foot lot within existing 10,690 square foot church built in 1955, 1955 and located in the R1 zoning district. The applicant is seeking to establish a daycare center with, uh, within two existing rooms on the first floor of the church. The daycare center is proposing to occupy 416 square feet of space within the church and provide approximately 600 square feet of open space in an existing courtyard. Proposed hours of operation for the daycare center are, are Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Two employees and up to 12 children are proposed to be onsite at any given time. A conditional use permit is required per the zoning code for all non-family daycare centers located in the R1 zoning district. There are no off-street parking spaces proposed for the preschool as there's none that exists at the moment. And a parking waiver is required to waive the required two off-street parking spaces required of the proposed daycare use. Thank you.
Great. Um, we'll just quickly, are there any questions from staff, uh, of staff before we open it to the applicant for a brief presentation?
Um, maybe I should, I like to ask staff, do you have any information about the previous childcare, uh, operation that was in this building? And how long ago was that and, and how big was it, do you know?
Uh, let's see. I see here in the history that there was a use permit for West Coast Children's Center and Clinic and that was in 1981 though.
So, okay, a long time ago. And we don't know how big that was, huh?
No, there aren't that specific details about it.
Pardon me?
There are no specific details on how big that was.
Okay.
Commissioner McLeod, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just a quick question. Um, you know, looking at the photographs of the church at 7:00 AM, um, in the, uh, staff report, I mean, there are no cars there. How many spaces are there along the church? We have, um, two frontages or two sides. So how many parking spaces are there in front of the church and at the side street?
You know, I couldn't tell you specifically because quite honestly, when we do the surveys, we have to kind of do it by eye as cars are moving in and out.
Yeah.
But it's also kind of a weird time to survey for parking in general.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of it is, you know, can I guess and check at this point, but I mean, there is, there was a substantial amount of parking at that date and time.
Yeah. And then are, are any of those spaces designated as loading zones, drop-off pickup zones at the moment?
Not, not that. I saw specifically that I can recall.
Chris, maybe piggybacking on that. Do you know what, what is the process in the city for, um, obtaining a white zone or a loading zone in front of your own property?
Anne, do you want to maybe come in?
Sure. Yeah, it's a matter of filing an application, um, and then that would go, uh, to the Transportation Commission for, uh, consideration and action.
So it's a discretionary sort of commission-based decision?
Exactly. It's similar in, in the sense that like, for example, we do blue curbs based on, you know, applications that are filed and a demonstrated need. So it would be a similar situation if someone, a business or in this case, a church were to apply for a loading zone.
Any other commissioners have questions before we turn it over to the applicant? Okay. With that, then why don't we open it up for a brief presentation from the applicant? And then we will open it up for public comment. We have the applicant on the line.
Yes, Fahy, you can now speak on the project. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for inviting me to the hearing. Yes, the Montessori preschool is the smallest school with a group of twelve children, maximum ages between two years to six years old. The preschool operates from Monday through Friday from seven AM to six PM. The school do not operate on the weekends. So I think my opinion is about parking. Parking cannot be an issue as parents drop off and pick up the children at the curb. It is like curbside drop off and pickup. The parents do not come at the same time, like the children will be dropped off between seven thirty AM to nine thirty AM, two hours in the morning. And pickups will be between five PM to six PM in the afternoon. And the parents need to go to work after dropping off their children at a school, and they do not park their cars on the street from seven AM to six PM all day. We do not bring any bells for arrival or dismissal of children like public schools do. Some parents walk from the neighborhood, so there is no traffic. So issuing a parking waiver for the Montessori preschool will not be a problem at all, I believe. So I got another objection about trash plants and cleaning. I'm very familiar with the neighborhood, and I take walks around the church. I had never witnessed trash or any other garbage in front of the church or around the neighborhood. It is always very clean and well-maintained environment. I take responsibility as a teacher. The children who attend my care do not misbehave by tossing garbage or damaging the plants around the neighborhood because I am here to support the children, to be a good human being who will be responsible and respectful of their surroundings. It is part of my curriculum. So I am here to save the children, the little children. And it is my goal to raise well-mannered future leaders. For the employees parking, I will have two full-time employees, including myself, and will be using one car or two cars. And since I live a few blocks from the church, I would prefer to walk to the church or my husband will drop me off. So this is what I had to talk about my project. Thank you so much for giving the time.
Thank you. Commissioners, does anyone have questions for Fahy? Seeing none, then why don't we go ahead and open it up for a public comment, Chris?
Yes, if anyone would like to speak on this project, please use the raise your hand feature. I see we have one phone call listener. You may press star nine if you would like to participate in a discussion. Not seeing any hands raised.
Okay.
No.
Nope. Okay. If there's no public comment, then public comment is closed, and we'll turn it back to the commission for deliberations. Anyone like to start?
I'll start. I mean, my only comments are based on some of the letters written. And one was the lack of parking. And I kind of don't quite understand that because it is a drop-off and pickup. I don't see that using a lot of parking. If it was an issue, there's always a space here to do diagonal parking. Can you hear me? Is my speaker working?
Yes.
And it's wider than, it's plenty of room. We actually do diagonal parking on one side of the street. So that's always a fallback if it's really needed. But I don't see how it would be needed. People, it might be a little bit of a rush, pick up twelve kids at one time. But every time there's an event, like choir here, my daughter uses this for her choir on Saturdays, and at least thirty kids get picked up. And that seems to be accommodated fairly efficiently. One neighbor was concerned about people trampling the planting between the sidewalk and the curb that she maintains. And I can see that being an issue. But I think it's also a design element that planting is really not pedestrian friendly. It's very fragile. It's, it's kind of a planting strip you have to step on in order to get out of your car. And so there's maybe a little bit of brick work there or planting that can handle a little trampling would solve the problem rather than just not letting the daycare take place. So I think it's really a design solution, not a programming problem with the church. I think the daycare would be a good use for, some of these old churches have tough time finding, you know, use once the congregation kind of leaves. But this church is doing a lot of things, and I think it's pretty interesting. So I'd like to support the daycare use in this facility. That's it.
Commissioner Jennings?
I'll just jump in to say that I think Commissioner Kent summarized my views on it quite nicely. So I'm also supportive of this use. And I do think that if there were issues that arise, you know, due to drop-off and pickup, I, it sounds like there is a process for actually establishing, you know, a temporary drop-off zone. And that is something that I, you know, would hope they would consider i- if the, if an apparent need arises for that in the future.
Commissioner Donaldson?
I think I, I support the project and including the, the parking waiver. I, I think the, the use is appropriate for the appropriate use of the church. It's not a very large school here that we're talking about. It's a necessary, provides a necessary service to the community. And it looks to me like it historically has been in this location as well. So I think I, I can support the application and, and vote in favor of it. I did feel sympathies for the neighbor who is trying so hard to maintain the, the city-owned parking strip in the front, adjacent to the church. And I probably agree with Chris that trying to maintain a public parking space like that needs some very rugged vegetation to make it work. It's, it, she has her work cut out for her to, to make it really beautiful, I think. And I'm sorry that it's been trampled as it has. So I think those are my comments.
Commissioner McLeod?
I agree with what everyone's been saying. I think daycare is an important use. In fact, I think it's considered an essential, essential use right now with COVID. You know, very important to help parents out. And I think it's an appropriate place for it. The church provides a lot of great community uses. You know, I get it's kind of a busy place, but it's busy by design, and it's a helpful, it's an asset to our community. So I don't see the daycare making a huge difference in what's happening at the church. I think the drop-off and pickup will be relatively modest, five minutes, ten minutes in and out. So I don't think that's a long-term parking problem. And I think there's enough parking in the neighborhood to absorb the, the employees parking. So I support the project and the waiver. And it is difficult. I sympathize with the other neighbor who's had her plants trampled. But maybe it would be more appropriate to put a little hardscape, something there, pavers or bricks or something. It's really difficult to maintain those spaces, even in front of my house, you know, it gets trampled kind of thing. So, and it is city space. It's public space. And I appreciate people taking ownership of it in a sense and trying to make it look better. But maybe there's a simpler, practical solution for it.
Well, I just want to chime in. Actually, technically, the homeowner is responsible for that planting.
Oh, careful.
That's good to know.
Well, I don't have a whole lot to add. I agree. I think this is an appropriate use. I support the parking waiver. It would be a shame to, you know, there's not really a pragmatic way to get parking on this site. So by denying it, it pretty much just means we're denying childcare, which is in critical need. I also kind of see this as a way to make sure we sort of ensure the longevity of this building. I think it's a really nice building. I think it's a contributory part of the character of Albany and the spread of town. And encouraging uses that enable sort of the, the long-term livelihood and finances of this property, I think is all in all an asset to the community. So with that, I'm also supportive of the project. With that, would anyone like to propose a motion?
Sure. I'll move approval of planning application twenty twenty eight, a conditional use permit and parking waiver for Happy Day Montessori preschool at St. Albans Episcopal Church.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And then all that motion, we'll call the vote. Commissioner McLeod? Aye. Okay. Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
And Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
And I too support the, the motion. So that motion passes five to zero. With that, we will move on to item five on our agenda, which is general public comment. General public comment is for folks wishing to address the commission on an item that is not otherwise agendized on today's agenda. Chris, do we have anyone in the queue for general public comment?
As of right now, I do not see anyone with their hand raised. We have one phone caller, if you wish to speak, star nine. Yep, no public comment.
Okay. With that, then, public comment is closed, and we will move on to item six on our agenda. This is discussion and possible action. So first up, we have item six dash one, code amendments to section twenty dash one hundred, procedures of the resolution of intention twenty twenty dash zero four. That staff presentation?
Sure. I'll do a quick little presentation. I'll keep it very succinct. Once again, before you tonight, we're back with another round of code amendments, this time to chapter twenty one hundred, procedures of the Albany Municipal Code. As this commission knows, from time to time, as staff reviews projects for compliance with the zoning code, we routinely find portions within the code that require further clarification or modification. Additionally, with the global pandemic occurring right now, there are also other challenges that staff has to go through while processing these projects. And so that's further highlighted with the proposed code amendments before you tonight. Specifically, we are looking at section one hundred ten E four C, which stipulates the provisions for which projects are required to have story pool installation for second story additions or new construction. It's a little vague within the code, and so we would want to clarify that and specify which projects are indeed subject to story pool installation. Additionally, we are looking into streamlining the public review process for projects that are subject to administrative design review. And those are projects that are smaller in scale and are reviewed in a public hearing forum with city staff. Oftentimes, these take less than ten minutes. Ninety, I would say, it's pretty safe to say about ninety-five percent of the time, people don't show up to the hearings. And even in some cases, the applicants don't show up. So we're looking to kind of streamline that process, especially now as public hearings take a lot more staff than they do virtually, ironically. And then, and then lastly, a portion within twenty one hundred to eliminate the requirement for the resolution of intentions, ironically, to initiate code changes to allow for faster processing and adoption. It's just, it's an extra step. And seeing as we have fewer planning and zoning commission hearings, it, it will take up a big chunk of the hearing times that we do have available throughout the year in order to initiate code changes. And so next steps would probably be us bringing the draft code ordinance with the red line changes for you guys to review for a further and more in-depth discussion. But for you tonight, this is just reviewing the resolution of intention on whether the commission would like to see these code amendments move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, why don't we, maybe instead of opening up for questions, why don't we see if there's really quickly public comment? And then if not, we can kind of combine questions and comments if that works for folks. Chris, are there any members of the public online to speak on this item?
No, I'm not seeing any hands raised at the moment.
Okay. Then with that, we'll close public comment and turn it back to commissioners. Do any commissioners have questions or comments on this?
No, I, I have no problems with the proposal at all. So.
No. No comments.
I, yep, I would be happy to move in favor of adopting this resolution of intention to amend the code.
Great. Great. With a second, we'll call the vote. On that vote, Commissioner McLeod?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
And Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
I too support that vote. So that resolution is passed five to zero. That takes us on to item seven on our agenda, new business. We have one item, item seven dash one. This is a housing element study session. We have a staff presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. This is Jeff Bond, Community Development Director. I'll be making this presentation this morning, this morning, this evening, this pack of things. I'm going to screen for a PowerPoint presentation. Okay. So this is very much an update on a, on a process that long-range planning is very much a work in progress. And we're touching base in downloading some information that we're getting from, from the state and from the Association of Bay Area Governments and looking for any feedback and questions and comments you might have at this stage. We'll be checking in periodically over the next few years on the, next few months on this and have a more concentrated planning effort into twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. To begin, I think, as you all know, all cities in California must plan to meet the housing needs of everyone in the community. And this is done through the housing element, which is a chapter of our general plan. We're required to update the housing element every eight years. And although it's part of the general plan, it's typically a standalone document. And, and it can be updated separately from the schedule of updating the rest of the general plan. But it must be consistent with the, with the rest of the general plan. Our deadline for updating the, the housing element and for all the cities in the, in the San Francisco Bay Area is to be completed by January twenty three. And at the end of my presentations, I'll kind of go over very, by a very high level, what that deadline means for the next couple of years. So there are a variety of sections to the housing element. These are, on the screen show the four key elements. And of the four, I believe the most important is the site inventory. And this is where we identify where housing can be built in the community in the next eight years and make a commitment to keep that available for housing during the planning period. The amount of housing that we have to plan for is a two-step process. It begins with the California Department of Housing and Community Development determining what the Bay Area needs for the next eight years. And that's divided into four different income categories. This screen shows the last four housing element cycles. The, the current one is highlighted at the bottom. And there's been a, a lot of changes in state law over the last few years as the housing crisis has come to the forefront. As a result, there's As a result, there's, uh, the requirements that HCD is supposed to use in determining this number has changed quite dramatically. As a result, you can see the number of housing units that the Bay Area is collectively going to have to plan for has increased pretty dramatically. Um, and this is consistent with other regions that are in, are going through a housing element cycle. I think Southern California is a couple of years ahead of us, San Diego is as well. And they also have seen large increases in their, their overall allocation coming from the state. Um, as I mentioned, breaking this down by income category, uh, is, um, another key part of the HCD determination. And you can see the numbers, um, there's a, um, basically. The bottom number is market rate housing, so forty-three percent of the housing needed in the, in the, in the region is market rate housing. The balance, um, fifty-seven percent is some form of affordable housing. At this stage, once we've, in this number, there's a memo attached to your, your, uh, agenda materials directly from HCD describing their methodology. It goes into quite a bit of detail. Um, we're now at the stage in the Bay Area where we're working through how to take these numbers and distribute them through to individual cities. Uh, Association of Bay Area Governments is responsible for that work under state statute. And they have formed a housing methodology committee. It's a large committee. I think it has something like thirty-eight people. Um, they're representatives of elected officials, representative planning professionals, um, representative advocates for different. Um, different aspects of, of land use policy that all participate in this committee. And their work is, is, um, they're right in the middle of it. And some of the information that's attached is some of the staff reports that have been prepared for that committee. There are two key elements to determining their methodology. And, um, the, this, the first key element is what is the baseline? And, um, you can use, uh, initially for several months, a number of months, ABAG was giving some analysis of different. Um, uh, different possible allocations there in cities based on a baseline of existing households as of twenty nineteen. The, the mix of different income households in, in twenty nineteen. Um, just recently, they introduced a different baseline. And this is, um, what they're, uh, incorporating into their draft long-range plan for the region. They call it their blueprint. It's, um, part of what they call Plan Bay Area twenty fifty. And it, the introduction of this alternative baseline, the blueprint baseline, has, um. Quite dramatical implications on Albany and many other cities. Again, in the materials that are attached to, um, your agenda, the, the memo, um, from HCD staff breaks it down by city. And, um, what's on the screen is by, is Albany. So for, in the case of Albany, if the baseline selected is what was, um. On the ground in twenty nineteen in terms of the mix of housing households, that's the, the columns that are ten, uh, thousand, twelve hundred units. If the baseline is the, uh, the blueprint projections, then our numbers are quite dramatically lower. In, in the three hundred units range for, for the eight-year planning period. And the second, uh, consideration and methodological question that this committee is wrestling with is. Once you have the baseline determined, how do you determine which, um, factors are used to distribute among different cities? And in this case, they're really trying to, essentially policy levers of what are people trying to prioritize? Um, and some of the, the levers that they're looking at is, um. The jobs housing balance, the, uh, proximity to transit, the proximity to jobs. And, um, I think there were a total of ten different factors. One of the things that, um, that, um. Is attached to the link in your staff report that goes to a webpage where, um, anyone can kind of play around with these different assumptions and see how it adjusts. The outcome for individual cities. In the case of Albany, there is different factors have different, different, um. Some, some effect, but not a dramatic effect. So if you tend to wait transit access more than say, um. Uh, you know, jobs housing balance or something like that, you might see a swing of twenty, thirty, forty units, but not a major swing. Um, but, but the baseline does make a huge difference. And what's happening at the regional level with this really is the, the projection that they're building, uh, in, into the plan. The Plan Bay Area blueprint is really a lot more growth in the South Bay. And less growth in other areas of the Bay Area. So if you were to look at a South Bay city, in most cases, it's swapped. And their numbers, when you look at the twenty nineteen baseline, they're lower and then they add the, use the, the blueprint baseline and they're much higher. So, um, this is, um, this is, um, complicated work. There are a lot of variables. And again, if people are interested, the, the staff reports and the web link are probably the best place to go. I'll try to answer your question, but I haven't, uh, it's, it's a challenge to absorb it all. Um, the committee is scheduled to complete their work this fall. The original schedule was to complete it in September. I'm not sure that they're still on that schedule, but once their work is done, they make a recommendation. Um, the State Housing Community Development Department reviews that recommendation. And then, um, presuming that gets worked out by the state, the, the, um, Association of Bay Area Governments Executive Board makes the final determination. And then that becomes what we have to plan for and we work from there. Oops, excuse me. This is another example of, um. Of, of one of the analysis they did. Again, the, the graph on the left-hand side, the higher numbers are when you're using the twenty nineteen household baseline. And the numbers to the right are the blueprint baseline. There are a couple of other parts to the housing element that I think, um, are, are big changes and, um, and good changes all in all. Um, first is that, um, housing elements must now affirmatively advance fair housing. And there's been in the past some requirements to address and, and talk about fair housing policies. But this is a much more, um, assertive requirement and, um. Frankly, I think with, in light of the, the social racial justice issues that our country is dealing with right now, it's incredibly important that we're talking about this. And we have an opportunity through the housing element to, you know, to, to figure out how to address it locally in our housing stock and our housing policies. And this is, uh, the kinds of things that we will end up talking about is how to overcome some of the historic patterns of segregation that were created by land use plans from a century ago. And then how to make sure that the housing that does occur, um, contributes to inclusive communities and, and, um. Helps provide, provide economic opportunity for everyone in the region. Um, the second thing that is a significant change, um, is what sites we can count as a viable housing site, a housing opportunity site. Using, using their terminology. Again, there's an attachment to the staff report. It's a long memo. I think it's forty-four pages that goes into a detailed methodology of, uh, that we'll have to work through. Uh, we're just now absorbing what all this means. Um, we at the staff level have, have a kind of a rough outline of the. We know what we've used in the past for previous housing elements and we have a rough idea of what may or may not work. For those existing sites and future housing elements. Uh, fortunately, there's a training session, uh, this Friday that will be attending to, to learn a lot more of those details. Um, but the point is that they want, and this, the state legislature and the governor in approving the legislation, they want us to put. Uh, real sites into our housing element so that we actually see these, um, these, uh, sites get developed. And, um, I think in the staff report, there's a table where you can see we, we're really not getting close to achieving the targets, um, particularly for affordable housing. And that have been established in previous housing element rounds. Um, this will be a challenge for us. The, a couple of the ideas that come up in these state laws, basically, we're not supposed to recycle sites that have been used in. In previous housing element rounds unless there's some changes in, in, um. Unless we either have substantial evidence that there's a potential for, for development. Or, um, there have been changes in zoning that extends the capacity for development. So your work, uh, this evening and continue to work on the San Pablo. Specific plan is, is, um, incredibly helpful to being able to accomplish this, um, this housing element. And, um, uh, you know, there's also size restrictions where with some. Adjustments apparently sites that are less than a half an acre or sites that are more than ten acres are not, um, considered feasible housing sites. And particularly on the small side, that may affect us. We may be able to, um, you know, we see a lot of small site development in the city. We just don't have a lot of big development sites. So, um, we'll, we'll have to wrestle through that a little bit. In, in clo- in closing, there's a, a, this planning process is a little, is going to be a little bit challenging. It's a little bit different than some of the other planning processes that we go to, go through. Um, first of all, we're working against a hard deadline. We do have to get this done by January twenty twenty-three unless the state legislature passes, uh. Legislation that changes that date, which no one expects them to do. Um, and the failure to, to complete the housing element has a consequence on our eligibility for grant funds for all sorts of different things. Um, second of all, the contents of the plan are pretty much set by state law. And, um, sometimes it's a bit clunky. We're, we're all using the same, essentially the same template. And every city is a little bit different, but we have to work through that. Um, and then third, our work is reviewed and must be approved by the State Housing Community Development Department before. It becomes, if we, before we can officially adopt it. So, um, uh, all those things are, in particular, the HCD compliance involves, um. Some number of months of interaction with staff. They see a draft report. They usually, in our experience in the past, will provide very substantive comments that need some, some substantial work and community discussion. And then we complete it. Um, our thinking on how to approach this is to start as soon as we can, probably early in twenty twenty-one. The, um, the first thing we need to do is, and is, we would do with any sort of, uh, planning effort like this, is develop a scope of work and approach to community engagement. And budget and so forth, and that will all occur through consultation with the commission and council and, and others. We need to get, um, some degree of a preliminary draft completed sometime in twenty twenty-one in order that we can begin the environmental review process. Um, there's going to be a lot of attention to housing elements in the Bay Area and, um. Our environmental review document, uh, needs to be rigorous. It needs to be thorough. It needs to be defensible. And so we want to get started on that as quickly as possible so that we have a good, good document. Whether it's an environmental impact report or a negative declaration or categorical exemption, we don't know. We need to know where we're, we're planning, where the sites are first. So giving that preliminary idea to a draft stage is, is very important. And then, as I mentioned, we do the actual environmental analysis and that can take, um, depending on what we're, the scale of that work, it's six months, maybe a year. Um, and then we're, um, to some degree on a parallel path, interacting with, with the Housing Community Development Department. And, um, you know, as a practical matter, a January twenty twenty-three deadline really means it should be completed by November because. December is a pretty tough month to get anything done, particularly a high-profile planning document like this. So, um, it's, it's going to start to move. Um, relatively quickly, I think, over the next couple of years. Um, we're excited about it. It's super important work, but, um. Uh, and, and there are a lot of moving targets and, and that we don't have all the answers yet. We obviously don't know what number of housing units we're planning for. We won't know that, at least at a draft level for a few more months. Um, but, but nonetheless, we're starting to think about it. Um, I think I'll pause there and, um, take any questions from commissioners if you have any.
Great, yeah, Commissioner Donaldson.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, yeah, I guess my first question, I guess is, um. Do, uh, i- if we haven't built all of the units in the current, um, housing element, uh, uh, do, is this a. Start over with a new, a new set of numbers or do we have to also, um, uh, uh, build our, build our deficit from the, the, the current housing element? Uh, in other words, are they additive? The ones we haven't built, do they get added on to the new one?
It's, um, it's a restart. So we start with that.
Restart.
But, but there is some discussion and, and I'm not exactly sure whether it has any legs or not, but it, but. Um, some advocates would argue that the cities that have not performed well currently in the current document since twenty fifteen. Um, should get more the next time around because we haven't, haven't done our share. Um, I will say, um, that we think that overall, we're going to be pretty close to our, our share. Um, mostly due to a combination of the SAHA project, um, this secondary dwelling units that we're, we're cranking out on a pretty regular basis. And the Belmont Village project does count, um, towards the, the, the current cycle that we're in. So we'll, we'll be pretty close. I think we'll be better than a lot of cities in the Bay Area.
Good.
But, but to be honest about that, the one thing we're not close on, even with the SAHA project, is we're nowhere close to meeting our affordable housing goals. Or our, our, our affordable housing mandates, I should say. Um, we, we haven't been able to get close to that.
My second question is, I didn't understand that last graph you were showing. The, the numbers in the eleven hundred range and then the three sixty range. Are, are those, that, I think that's a baseline approaches. I, I didn't understand the point of that. And what the significance of the numbers at all.
Um, it, it, I understand that. It took me a long time to understand it as well. And I'm not sure I fully grasp the, the details, but the, the basic concept is that, that, the. Housing Methodology Committee is wrestling with two different baselines. And then with a total of ten different factors that they may weight in different ways. And depending on, particularly on the baseline they select, we could either get more than a thousand units in our, um, our allocation. Or maybe something in the three hundred units. And then exactly what those numbers would be depends on the allocation.
Huge difference.
It's a huge difference and every city, almost every city has those kinds of variations from one assumption to the other. So it's going to be, um, it's going to be really interesting. A lot of, it, there's a lot at stake, um, from one city to the next.
Oh, Jeff, this is, that's a pretty, that's a very political, uh, decision done in ABAG, right? And he says mostly people on ABAG are mostly rep- po- political represented. Do they have any, like, policy scientists that are helping with this or is this strictly political football?
So the, the Housing Methodology Committee has a, a good distribution of people that have both. Um, you know, professional, uh, backgrounds and advocacy backgrounds. Um, and, um. But they're, they're just making a recommendation and ultimately, I think, um, it's a political decision by the elected officials that serve on the ABAG board. And I don't know what those political dynamics are frankly, but I'm sure it will be pretty intense.
Yeah, I bet, I bet, yeah.
Yeah, I, I did a quick look to see the, the ABAG makeup. I mean, is it one, community gets one? Who, who represents us? Does the mayor on there or who?
Um, I'm not sure. I should know this, but I don't. I don't know who are current, which council member is currently the, the delegate to ABAG. They have an executive committee. Um, I will say that this, the mayor of Berkeley is the chair of the Housing Methodology Committee. And, um, you know, our, our situation is aligned with Berkeley's. There's not much difference other than just the scale of the two cities. So, um. To the degree that he's looking at this from, from Berkeley's perspective, we might ride the cocktails frankly.
Interesting.
Why don't we just briefly, if we can, just see if there's any public comment and then we can turn it back? It sounds like it's mostly a mix of questions and comments that we all have. Um, Chris, is there anyone on the line for public comment?
Nope, no one on the line.
Okay, then we will officially close public comment. Bring it right back. Uh, Commissioner McLeod, were you about to, um, jump in there?
Yeah, I was just, um, curious. So this will establish our, our housing targets, correct? And it could vary greatly, so it makes it difficult to plan ahead. That's just, uh, I'm getting here. Is that? Uh, what's going on? And then we are really not at all close in terms of the affordability mix. And then we are really not at all close in terms of the affordability mix. You know, if I, it was 26% for very low income and 15% for low income. You know, our inclusionary housing ordinance gets us to like 15% total or something. So what, what do you, what do we need to do to improve those percentages? Yeah. How do we do? I guess that's my question.
Well, it's, the, the table in the staff report is region wide and, and, but I think it, it's, there are a couple of things that have been discussed. There has been the discussion of creating a regional housing financial, finance agency. And I forget what it was supposed to be called. It was something that would have to go on the ballot this fall. And I think a political decision was made in the middle of COVID not to put it on the ballot. So the bottom line is money. If you want to create an affordable housing unit, it takes a subsidy of at least a couple hundred thousand dollars. And it depends on which kind of, it depends on a lot of factors, but if, you know, if you're doing the math and around, around number of use 200,000, 250,000 is the required subsidy in order to make it rentable at an income level that people can afford. And that's just, you know, millions of dollars. And you're just doing that math. If we do 100 units in, in Albany, that's $20 million, right? I mean, it's, we don't, we don't have the capacity even under the most ambitious kind of political agenda to, to build something more than, you know, that kind of number, I don't think right now. Keep, keeping in mind everything else that's going on.
Just really quick, we actually do have one speaker, Jeremiah, whenever you, Chair, you ready?
Yeah. Why don't we go ahead and take that caller, Jeremiah? Go ahead and speak.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate the, the time to give me an opportunity. You guys moved so past, so quickly when you announced public comment. I can't raise my hand fast enough before you move on, you know? You don't even give us but 10 seconds to, to raise our hand, but thank you for coming back. Yeah, this affordable housing thing, you know, give, give whatever funding you can. Albany needs more affordable housing, obviously. Housing is way too expensive. I mean, every year you guys got the rental increase, which is what, 5%? So if you do the math, in 20 years, rent's going to be $4,000 just due to 5% rent increases. So I don't know. Just got to give people a fair chance to get affordable housing. And Albany is a really nice place. Just because we have low income housing doesn't mean it's going to be trashy people. You know, it's just, so do what you can when just planning a zoning commission. And thank you very much.
Thank you. And Chris, that is the only person with their hand raised, right, at this point?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great. Go ahead and turn it back to the commissioners again.
Yeah, if I could just follow up. I guess, you know, depending on the housing requirements, do we need to look at more than San Pablo Avenue in terms of upzoning or? I mean, we have the Swan corridor that is fairly low as well. It could go higher in terms of height and density, the Brighton area, close to BART. So is that going to be something that we should be looking at coming up soon?
Yeah. So one parcel in particular that we're, we're already thinking a lot about. And in fact, the commission, you've talked about it too, is the, the property on Albany Hill, the 10 acre parcel. And we anticipate that that will be incredibly important to, to helping us achieve. It's already rezoned residential. We haven't used it in past housing elements, so we're not, it's not a recycled parcel. It is a little bit more than 10 acres, but I think we can probably, we have a pretty good explanation of why that is and that there's, there's, there's the topology and the topography and the, the habitat issues make it functionally less than 10 acres. With respect to the properties on Brighton, the Brighton neighborhood, we have used some of those sites in the past. And you had a study session on a project recently for another one, which is great. Most of those are going to be less than a half an acre, so we don't know whether that would be acceptable to, to HCD. And even, it could be a situation where even if it is, we think it's viable, HCD might not accept it as viable. And the other issue with some of those smaller parcels in, in that neighborhood is the extraordinary value of the single family homes that might be on those properties now. And it, it almost makes it infeasible to buy, you know, that the notion would be you buy a couple of houses and, and you can build more units. And if you kind of do that, that kind of back of a development pro forma, it's pretty hard to make that work because of the cost of, and the value of the existing single family home on the property. So we, I think we will definitely want to explore that as much as we can, but not holding out hope for that to be a major source of, of housing development.
Could I just ask one last question?
Perhaps.
Uh, I think for the, yeah, the Albany Hill parcel, weren't we going to try to get a voter initiative to repeal or amend Measure K? Is that still happening or is that? I mean, half the lot was supposed to be, at least half the lot was to be an open space anyway. And then we wanted to concentrate on the bottom of the hill.
I'll, I'll go ahead and answer that. Yeah, that is still the intention. In conferring with our legal counsel, there are some SEQA requirements that have to be fulfilled in order to get, get any change in land use on the ballot. So our thinking was that the site would be included as part of the housing element. And when we do the SEQA analysis, we would incorporate, incorporate it specifically for that property. So that once the housing element is adopted and certified and our SEQA work is also adopted and certified, that would lay the groundwork to come back with a ballot measure to amend the density on that parcel.
Is that going to happen for this November or is that going to have to wait?
It's going to have to wait till the next election cycle, most likely.
So a little ways.
It's a ways off, but it's definitely, it's definitely on our radar.
So, so to clarify, we're, this, this conversation is about a, a sort of a significant up, upzoning of that, of that 11 acre parcel. Yeah. Okay. I like that. That's good.
But I, I don't, I don't want to leave that without saying it's, the upzoning would completely respect the, the ecology of the, of the property the open space and so forth. The idea would be to concentrate it on, on Pier Street as your, you commissioners directed us back in January.
Right. That, I think that's good. And the pattern of development along Pier Street is, is pretty high density. So I can, I can see that fitting in quite well. So Jeff, is the time coming to be looking at Golden Gate Fields through, through this process at all?
So that's a good question and, and maybe, but it's way more than 10 acres.
Way more.
So again, I don't know if, if, if HCD would accept that. And it is, it's not a vacant site. It's about, it's, you know, I don't, it's a growing concern. I think the, the people who run Golden Gate Fields would certainly say they're trying to make it last, you know, they're, they don't intend to close down.
Okay.
I think we will get property, other property owners on San Pablo Avenue who would probably be able to prepare documentation for us that says, yeah, they would be interested in the development of their property, even though they're, it might be used now at a, a lower density use on some of the auto. You know, in particular, the property that's used to give a good year. I don't know what kind of name of auto shop is now. But that site at Brighton and San Pablo, although it's not vacant, I think the property owner has indicated to us that he, he's interested in seeing it developed in the near future.
Okay. Maybe Mechanics Bank is interested in some land use and land use investments on their own too.
Yeah, that's another one. That would be a fantastic site for development. And you know, the banking industry, I'm sure is trying to figure out whether they need bank branches anymore. So I'm, I've always been hopeful that they would decide they don't need that branch. As long as it is, it's wonderfully convenient for all of us, the city banking.
Or have the branch on the ground floor of, of a new building. That'd be great. Yeah. Interesting. Okay. I have another question. Do you know if Barry Miller is going to be available for helping on this? He does a great job on the previous housing element.
We're, we're staying, we're keeping an eye on Barry. We, we stay with us on this.
There'll be high demand for his services, I'm sure.
We're, we're, I think he did a terrific job for us. I think he understands the community. This is the kind of work that he specializes in. So yeah, I think we'll be getting a proposal from him.
Any other comments on this item? All right. I don't have any comments either. This is, it's a lot to absorb. And I'm sure there will be many, many more discussions. So I, I give you guys good luck of helping to filter through all that HCD documentation and instructions.
Yeah. Unfortunately, at some point you all are going to have to read it. You, you don't have to yet, but sometime soon it's going to, it's going to become a big part of, of your.
I have one question. If we, if we do fail on, on reaching our goals, you said we don't qualify for grants. What grants would these be? Like street improvements and?
Let me, let me clarify. If we do not complete the preparation of the plan on time in a form that's acceptable to HCD, then we may be ineligible, probably ineligible for just about any state grant. It's, you know, there might be some things in the recreation world or in the police world or something that I'm not aware of. But anything that's transportation related or end use related, it's just one of the threshold compliance requirements for, for applying for a grant.
Are there any, are there any communities that, well, probably not, but I would imagine some wealthy community that doesn't want to deal with this. You know, they like it the way, Atticent, for instance, would they just forego it and don't care about the grants?
They, they, Huntington Beach was the poster child of, of communities that didn't comply with housing element law and the governor ended up filing litigation against the city. And I think they agreed to, to business settlement to actually finally prepare a housing element. There are a few others scattered around. I, I think in the Bay Area, most every city has done it, but there were a few cities in Marin County that were kind of, kind of slow. And I think there was one or two in Santa Clara County that was pretty slow. But these days it's just, you just got to do it with your light.
All right. Well, with that, if there's no other comment, we'll keep things, keep things moving here. So we'll move on to item eight, wrapping things up here. We have an August recess. So it looks like I, next meeting will be September 23rd, same time, 7:00 PM?
Actually, I believe it's 5:00 PM because we're going to do another study session.
Okay, great. So September 23rd.
September 23rd. Okay.
September 23rd, 5:00 PM. Great. Thank you. That then adjourns our meeting and thanks everyone for another successful remote hearing. Thank you.